Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the September 5th meeting of the Columbia County Planning and Zoning Committee to order. If you would, please stand, and Commissioner Evans will lead us in our prayer, and Commissioner Henderson will lead us in the pledge. And gentlemen, if I could, ask you to remove your caps and your advisors for the meeting.
Join me in prayer. First of all, God, thank you for the change of the season, blessing that you've granted to us, our children back to school, changes, good mornings, always remember, care, planet, to take care of neighbors, what we're about here tonight. Lord, also ask you to those who are suffering nearby, a very close and dangerous storm, rescue those that need rescuing, hope that storm guides itself out to sea and away. Please be with those in this county, our first responders here, about their daily business, protecting those of us in this room, harm.
Pledge allegiance.
Defying United States of America, true covenant, one nation, God visible, justice across.
Thank you. Be seated. If I could remind you to please silence your cell phones before we get started tonight. We do have four or five commissioners present tonight. Commissioner Dempsey's still wrestling with a knee replacement that has not gone as smoothly as he would like. Sir, if I could ask you to please remove your visor while you're inside. Thank you. Gentlemen, you've had an opportunity to review the minutes of the August 15th meeting. If there are no changes or amendments, I'd like a motion for approval or to receive the amendment you'd like to propose.
Make a motion to approve.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Motion to approve the minutes passes 4-0. Mr. Vice Chair, I believe you've got one item to add to the agenda this evening?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we need to add a conceptual plan to item H2G6.
If there are no other additions to the agenda, I'd like a motion for the approval of the agenda with the added item.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the agenda with the added item stated.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion to approve the amended agenda passes 4-0. Before we begin tonight, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the planning commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. The decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to the commissioners for final action on September 17th at 6:00 PM in these chambers. If you wish to address the board of commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Jennifer Neal, and you can obtain a request to speak for them for that particular meeting. Tonight during our meetings, we're a little less formal than that meeting. You do not need a request to address this body. However, I would ask that you raise your hand. We'll ask you to come up to the microphone, give us your name, home address, and then if you take three to five minutes to give us your opinion for or against, or if you come in public comments, whatever issue you'd like to speak about. And if you're here with any kind of a neighborhood association, I'd like for you to send one person to represent the association first, and then we'll bring you up individually after that. If you get repetitive, and we've heard that information before, I'll ask you to yield the microphone so that one of your neighbors could come up and give their two cents on whatever the issue is. With that being said, we're going to go back to two unfinished items. Mr. Butler, first is yours, file RZ 190803.
Yes, sir. This is a request for rezoning from R and M1 to PRD. Looking off Bigger Place Road, 265.94 acres. The location of the property, again, on the east and west side of Bigger Place Road, does connect into Canterbury Farms Parkway. In the current zone of the property, it is split zone M1 and RA. You do have Canterbury Farms is a plenty of development to the east. South, you have more RA and also some R2 right there. And then across Bigger Place Road, you have more RA and M1. Airview of the site, again, currently heavily wooded, is existing site on Bigger Place Road, and also the end of Canterbury Farms Parkway. And the plat of the property, the overall plan. The applicant has requested to table this again to October 3rd. The overall plan at this, shown on this plan at least, is for townhouses and single family. Because they requested to table the application, we are not going to provide really any in-depth analysis of it. And there are likely going to be some changes to this. So they have requested to table it. This does show some of the house examples that they're proposing, also the pedestrian plan, green space plan for the project. For the future land use, it is within the neighborhood's character area. That does permit single-family residential. There are some townhouses on this that we would probably discuss a little more in depth as soon as we had a plan that was more ready to go. Again, staff recommends to table the application, request of the applicant.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions of staff? Okay, is the applicant here this evening? Yes, sir. Please come forward and give us any additional information you'd like to have. Please start with your name and home address.
Jason Linkter with Ivy Development, 17578 Atomic Road, Aiken, South Carolina, 29803. As Will stated, we'd like to table to the October 3rd meeting. Our intent is not to keep tabling this, but this is a complex project, and feel like this month will give us the time to work it out with staff and have something ready to go for next.
Is October 3rd going to give you what you need?
Yes, sir.
Okay, because we...
We don't want to do it. I know y'all don't want to do that, keep delaying it.
Robert's rules will let you table as much as you need, but we try to make it a habit of tabling no more than twice.
Right.
So if you can't get it done there, we need to know, because I'd rather you withdraw without prejudice so you can come back when you're ready.
Right.
As opposed to tabling and moving from there.
We'll be ready.
Mr. Chairman, I move to table item number H1A1RZ 190803.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion. How many folks are here to discuss this tonight? Anybody? Okay. So what we're going to do is we're going to delay the public hearing on this, because what you see here is not going to be what they present. So I'd rather you have the current information before we open up the floor to have a public hearing, but you'll have ample opportunity to come up and speak your mind either for or against. Okay? All right. That being said, gentlemen, all in favor to table till October 3rd, passes 4-0. Do we need to see the conceptual plan, or will this vote carry to that?
Carries, sir.
Okay, all right. So we'll skip the conceptual plan. Ms. Boltie, you can save your energy for the next presentation. Provisional home occupation for Davis Clearing.
Yes, sir. This is a request for provisional home occupation on two parcels off Hereford Farm Road, 5275 and 5257. Together, they total almost seven acres. They are zoned R1, single-family residential. The location of the parcels, just to the north of Southwind Village off Hereford Farm Road. And this is the aerial of the site. The business operations primarily take place on the one parcel where the shop building is. There's a little bit of vehicle parking that goes on in that location. The shop is used when equipment needs to come back for any repair or maintenance. The Benny Davis Land Clearing Business operated on this property for just over 25 years with no issues that staff is aware of. When Mr. Davis unfortunately passed away, the business license did lapse, and it is his family who are looking to carry on the business at this time. In order to meet home occupation requirements, they are using some outdoor storage in a building outside of the house. They do need provisional home occupation approval. The business includes taking down small trees, laying sod, grass cutting, some small area grading, similar jobs like that. There are a couple pieces of equipment associated with this business that primarily just travel from job site to job site, so they don't typically travel in and out of this residence on a daily basis. And there are only the two employees with the business at this time. They both live in the house on the adjacent parcel. As the business grows, they may expand and add employees, but those employees would meet on the job site and would not come to the residence as part of their work. In this case, I mean, the property is well off the road. The storage area is over 500 feet from the road, so would not be visible to the public. And they have submitted letters from the adjacent neighbors indicating that they've not had any issues with the business operating there in the past. Staff is recommending approval with a couple of conditions to make sure that that storage area is buffered appropriately from the neighbors. And that concludes the staff recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions? This is not a public hearing. I do have one question. You mentioned that the business had been dormant for a while. What's the county rules? If it's dormant for more than a year, they have to come back?
Yes, sir. If it's dormant for more than a year, they have to comply with all the current regulations when they reopen.
Any other questions, Jim? Okay, so we need a motion to approve, deny, or to table?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the provisional home occupation for Davis Clearing at 5275 and 5257 Hereford Farm Road.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Question? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 4-0. Ms. Neal, temporary use authorization for information only.
Yes, sir. This is a request for temporary use authorization for our construction office trailer at 501 Buff Road. It's currently zoned special zoning for manufacturing and distribution of water pollution control equipment, and it was approved by staff on August 27th. And this shows the location and the zoning of the site, and the site plan of where the construction trailer is going to be placed. And once again, it was approved by staff on August 27th.
Okay, and for your all's information, for those of you that haven't been here, staff is allowed to make approvals on several types of requests. This is one of them. So these folks are going to come in and have a temporary site that they're going to use for the construction office, so they can only get two approvals for one year on that kind of thing. But that is one of the approvals that staff can make and does not have to come in front of us here. All right, Ms. Boltie, conceptual plan for Crawford Creek 8.
Yes, sir. This is the concept plan for the next phase of Crawford Creek, located off North Old Bel Air Road and William Smith Boulevard. Currently zoned PUD, was rezoned back in 2018. This is the general location, the overall parcel, and then you can see the dotted line in the middle where this section roughly lies, and currently part of the Crawford Creek planned unit development. And the aerial of the site, it is currently undeveloped, although there is some construction underway around it at this point. This section includes part of what was phases eight, nine, and 11 in the rezoning application. There is no, there's no additional requirements tied to these particular phases in the development, so the fact that it's not strictly in phase order isn't a particular concern. The concept plan includes 117 lots ranging from 53 to 70 feet in width, and this meets the intent of this section, which had 50 and 60-foot lot widths. They're exceeding those, so nothing's smaller than allowed in their zoning. Generally speaking, the smallest lots are back at the rear of the Loop Road, while the largest drawn kind of the main travel routes. That does meet the master plan as shown for the PUD. We do have a couple park areas shown with this plan, and the neighborhood will also, of course, have access to the rest of the amenities in Crawford Creek. There is, there are a few traffic calming features shown with the concept plan. Our traffic department has indicated that there are some revisions needed to that with the construction plans. Those will be addressed at that time. This phase is with the rezoning, they cannot receive construction approval for this phase until the extension of William Smith Boulevard and the improvements on North Old Bel Air Road are complete. So we can approve the concept plan, but they won't receive approval to start construction until that road is done. Sidewalks and street trees are required as part of the development, and the house size will be similar to the rest of Crawford Creek. Plan is similar to other residential neighborhoods we see in the county with some buffer space between some of the lots, and peripheral green space with the creeks, floodplain, things like that. And staff is recommending approval of the concept plan.
Y'all, any questions of staff? Okay, this is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the conceptual plan for Crawford Creek 8.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 4-0. Mr. Butler, I understand you are a new expert on massage operators licenses.
New expert, oh great. This is a request for a massage operator's license from Heaven Still, DBA Lux Healing at 4573A Cox Road. That also includes a whole massage. They meet all the requirements of the massage operator's license, it's African's approval.
Gentlemen, any questions of staff? Okay, this is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve a massage operator's license, Heaven Still, DBA Lux Healing.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 4-0. Ms. Boltie, individual plat for...
We'll go with Chigo Lane.
Chigo?
Yes, sir. This is an individual plat to create 18 lots off Vern Sicking Road and Chigo Lane. Properties are located off Ridge Road, kind of way out towards the Chigo Creek, actually, and are currently zoned R4, which is recreational residential. Property is currently largely undeveloped, portions of it are cleared, and the proposal is to create a total of 18 lots. All of these lots front on existing roads, and there's no extension of utilities, so this is not a major plat by the strictest definition. However, it is more than four lots, so it does require your approval. Lots 1 through 14 all have access either from Ridge Road or from the existing public road. These four lots, access from the private road, that's Vern Sicking Road. Those represent lots 9 through 12 accessing from that private road. That is the maximum number that we allow to access from a private road without that road meeting all the requirements of our subdivision construction standards. Since they're at 12, they're not required to make any additional improvements. All of the lots meet the minimum lot size and frontage requirements for the R4 district, and staff is recommending approval.
Gentlemen, any questions of staff? This is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve item H2E1, individual plat for Chigo Lane.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? To approve carries 4-0. Mr. Butler, got a landscape plan review for Yelton Road?
That is correct. This is a landscape plan review, 460 Yelton Road. This is part of, about a year ago, actually in July of 2018, property was rezoned S1 special for a solar farm. One of the conditions with that, with the rezoning, is when they brought in their plans for development, the landscape plan would require approval by the planning commission. That's what we're looking at tonight. It shows the location of the property in the corner of Yelton Road and Ray Owens Road, and it's on the property and currently zoned S1 special. The landscape plan itself, you can see the dark green that's there, make sure you guys actually see the dark green side. That is the undisturbed buffer portion of it. Per code, or per their requirements, it was have a minimum of 30 feet of that. They're showing 60 feet for the whole things. They are going above and beyond there. You do have at the corners here, 200 feet off the road is supposed to be, remain as a buffer. Then on the interior of the site, you have the one that's kind of lime green is a 15-foot buffer that goes around the whole interior of the site. They have met extensively with our landscape architect to go over what the interior buffer is going to look like, as well as some removal of a certain amount of trees around the edge of it, ones that are very high. Again, with it being a solar farm, that shade could actually impact the solar side of it. So there have been a few trees removed. There probably will be a discussion about how many have been removed. He is not here today, unfortunately. But again, he did say that they met on site and went over, you know, kind of to remove a few select trees from around the perimeter of the site. Again, the idea there is to provide a as good a buffer as possible, have large trees that don't allow other trees to grow above them. The buffer itself could have to be supplemented quite a bit, so this should help other trees to grow around it. Again, staff has reviewed this plan. Oh, in terms of the actual planting of it, I can't really see it real well, but over here in this side, it does show how they'll plant the interior of the site. Again, it's all evergreens on the interior. All grow higher than what the actual panels are, so it should serve to fully screen this site. Again, it's currently in plan review, so there could be some minor modification. Again, this does show your clearing limits, this dark line around the edge here, so they aren't going any further than that. We have requested, as one of our comments, to do a little more screening on the front of it, where the actual entrance is, to better kind of hide that as you're passing by. Again, staff has recommended approval of the review.
This particular site has seen a little bit of traffic in some of the online forums, and comments, no, so this is not a public hearing, what we'll do is we'll ask you to come up in public comments, okay? The resultant questioning of the state, initially, and Mr. Butler, Mr. Slocner, jump in here anytime you want to if I say something incorrect. The county did not have the authority to mitigate anything on this site. Is that correct? Until it was an EPD project until about a week ago?
About two.
We had enough people call in and question that we were able to go to EPD?
Well, a lot of it was, we kind of questioned another application that said, here's how we're functioning. We said, well, let's talk to George Power about this, and kind of, let's see if we can get an assessment from EPD, because you know, the way that our code reads and also the state code, is that if they're what amounts to a public utility, they don't have to abide by LIA, local issuing authority regulations. So we were told, EPD had told us before on solar farms that, yeah, they're all going to be under EPD, so you guys are kind of out of the woods on a lot of it. Once we found out that, hey, these aren't really George Power projects, let's at least ask the question of EPD and say, we want their opinion on this. Here's what we're seeing, you know, tell us we're wrong, tell us we're right. They took it to Atlanta, and they said, no, that's a correct interpretation, the way that we're viewing it. That's when they said, you know, that will be a county LIA project. Now, EPD has said that they would like to question each applicant to make sure, but again, the way that this is appearing moving forward is that any of these that are not directly attached to George Power or other utilities, be under our jurisdiction.
So what's changed between them having oversight and us having oversight?
So those having oversight had to abide by our regulations, which are more stringent, and also we had more people on the ground able to actually go out and look at the site. So this will, this site will change quite a bit once their site plan is approved. The dark line you see here is clearing limits, but is also where they're going to put silt fence in. The entire site will be around, will have silt fence around it. Again, with it being under EPD and Georgia Forestry, they're not required to do that because it's a logging...
Permanent for the life of the project?
No, not for the life of the project.
Just while it's being built?
Yeah, while it's being built and it's tabled.
What about 57 stone or something to keep mud from being tracked out on the highway?
They'll have to, yeah, exactly.
This will come more like a building site, as opposed to a timbered site.
That's correct.
Have you had anybody from the Forester Commission or anybody come in and look at the site and give you an opinion on how?
They looked at it last week, I believe. We got their opinion today, actually, and they said it was a very well-done site. It looks bad. Yeah, it does. But they said it was well-done, met all the requirements, actually exceeded their requirements. It's one of those that appears to be totally fine.
What kind of requirements would they have that they would have exceeded?
So they have, for instance, the buffer around any kind of gully or anything like that, they left it, I believe it required a 25-foot buffer, they require, they have more of it around that site, so they've gone above and beyond on the interior of it, to leave those buffers undisturbed. If they had disturbed any of them, we would, yeah, a little different situation. So I think they knew that going into it, so they went a little above and beyond what they had to do anyway, kind of make themselves, you know, as safe as possible.
Gentlemen, any questions?
They repaired the buffer. Something happens to those buffers, or buffers die.
They'll have to mitigate anything that they take out that's not been approved. Again, Jonathan Williams, our landscape architect, has been on site with them. I mean, the applicant should be here tonight. He can, as well, he's been more involved with it than I have directly.
This is not a public hearing, but if there's anybody, yes, sir.
Um, but with that, I was out there a few weeks ago, and it is extremely thin portions. What is, how is that going to be mitigated or approved? I mean, I see this, I see the plan, but is there going to, it appears there will be an interior line of evergreens?
That is correct.
They, from their landscape plan, that interior line will be, cypresses, some evergreens will be...
Yeah, I don't know the type, but it'll be an evergreen of some sort. And again, that's all going to be, that's all going to be kind of designed in conjunction with our landscape architects, one of those that when they go out there and say, here's what we're doing, look them in behind and say, okay, that's going to work, or that's not going to work, add some here or what have you. It's going to take a little while to grow. We're not going to go in at, you know, 20 feet high, but a little bit of time, but again...
What will be taken out?
What's that?
What will be taken out that exists now and where on the...
So the only thing they could take out is where that green area, the light green, the kind of lime green, they could go in there and remove things out of that, but they got to go back in and replace anything. That's really where the actual buffer will be. And you still have the natural that's already there.
Dark green.
Dark green is natural.
Dark green, whether it's thick or thin now, is what everybody's going to have to live with.
Yeah. Now, and the lime green is what kind of makes up for it behind it.
When we voted on this, when we approved this before, wasn't there, wasn't there talk about tighter-packed evergreens and almost like a staggered, like worth? Why have we gone back to the single row?
I don't think there was a double. I'll have to go back and check, but...
Think they staggered them?
I thought we staggered them.
I mean, either one worked.
They weren't, they weren't together, but they were staggered to where it was kind of almost deeper coverage.
We could definitely make that change. If you guys want to do that, we can do it.
Any other questions? This is not a public hearing, but if you have a comment, I know I see one face in the audience that I know wants to comment on it. We'll ask you to come up at the end of the meeting in our public comments section and give us whatever information you'd like to have on this particular project. That'll be at the very end of the meeting, so you get to hang in and enjoy the whole thing. No, so we'll vote on this now. It's not a public hearing, so, gentlemen, I need a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to table it, and I'll kind of narrate here. There's some more information that could be presented by the applicant architect?
So the one thing that we did know is there's been conversation about some trees being cleared, may or may not have been approved by our landscape architect. That was brought up today, so it's one of those, and he is not here today, and I also didn't have a chance to get out there and look at it.
That answers my question, Ms. Boltie. I stand on that.
A second. Is there any discussion?
Well, I second from a standpoint of that I do recall the vote, and that it was staggered, and then we're coming back with a different...
If, if you're going to move to table, we need a date to table at 2. Seeing that this is your last meeting, you're getting us in the trick bag here.
How long, as far as our architect?
We could look at it tomorrow. That's the thing, is that we could find out very quickly, and the next meeting is the 19th.
The 19th.
That may not be suitable for the applicant, but again, it's one of those that...
If I don't want to nominate the 3rd, October 3rd, that would give everybody enough time back in, playing fort.
Motion is to table till October 3rd?
Yes, sir. Your second.
Second holds. Any other discussion? All in favor to table? Motion to table carries 4-0. Okay, we'll move into our public hearing portion of the evening. Mr. Butler, file RZ 190901.
This is a request for a major putter vision at 4592 Millhaven Road, currently zoned planning and development, or PUD. This use is residential. The location of the property, again, it's on the west side of Millhaven Road, and currently zoned planning and development. You have, again, most of the property around it is zoned PUD. You do have some M1 across the street. It shows an airview of the site. We've actually looked at the property next door earlier this year, and the existing site, tree, and the plat, again, the property over here is what we're dealing with. So the applicant came in, I believe, nearly a year ago, to talk about building a building on the site, and there was some back and forth about, did he need a variance or not? It ended up where he was told he did not need a variance, and then came back in and submitted his building plans. Lots of discussion internally about what the setbacks were for this site, and... and ended up getting built. It's built at five feet from the side and ten feet from the rear. Come to find out after a review of that, it's actually ten feet on the side and ten feet on the rear. The side setback is the issue in this case. So if we keep moving through the, through the pictures here, you have the rear setback at ten feet, again, shows it here, and the side that we'll see in a moment, going at five feet. Well, the applicant is within the side setback. Again, due to the, kind of the issues they had during the whole permitting process, staff is comfortable approving this, it's not in any, side or anything like that. It's not really impacting anything. The property next door already has a variance for their setback, so it's really not impacting anyone. Staff does recommend a condition with it, requires any future structure on the subject parcel to meet building setback. Accurate staff recommendation.
He's within the setbacks as he understood them at the time? Gentlemen, any other questions?
Can you go back to the pictures with the state measures? So go back, keep going back. One more. So if I'm looking at this picture, am I facing the front?
You're facing towards the, towards the property next door, so you're facing towards the south. So the front is.
So we're calling this the back?
This is the back.
Okay. Understood.
Any other questions? This is a public hearing, is the applicant here this evening? Yes, sir, would you like to come forward and give us any additional information? Please come on to the microphone, give us your name and home address. And in case any of you're wondering, we ask you to not speak until you get to the microphone, because these proceedings are recorded. You can get a copy from Ms. Neal if you'd like one. Also, you can, I believe, log on to the county website and watch this in living color.
Really bored.
Really are bored. All right, yes, sir.
I'm James Pulley, forty-five ninety-two Millhaven Road. And just that, I just want to make sure we understand the procedure. Mr. Butler highlighted it, but I did, we planned to build this building and put it in the other corner of our yard. But when we found out the setbacks were ten foot from the back and five foot on the side, which is what they originally told us, it wouldn't work, I wouldn't be able to get in and out of it. But then they said, well, they went through and said, you can ask for a variance to back it up closer. And I actually applied for that, paid for that. And then when we went, got back with the builder, and we went to look and we decided that we could turn the building around and put it in the other corner and meet the ten and the five, and we wouldn't need to go through all of this. But that was the reason for changing the plans, I didn't want to go through all this. So he went back, the builder went back and got, to get the permit, and at that time, when he brought back and it's submitted in the group, they had the rear at fifteen and the right and left at five. And we're like, well, wow, hold on, it was ten, where did the fifteen come from? Well, I came back here to y'all's office, and they went back and forth with a couple of people, and they said, we made a mistake. What was told to us was the fifteen would be on the other side of the street because there's a creek back there. Where you're at is ten and in fact five. And that's when planning approved the ten, changed to fifteen, fifteen to ten, and the five was never in question. So we built the building. According to that, they gave us the permit, built the building there, and through the whole process, we laid the foundation, to pour the foundation. One of the inspectors came out, measured it, signed off on the building permit, said, you're good to go. They come in and poured concrete. Same guy came out, measured everything, says, you're good to go, build your building. We built the building, he came out again, we're good to go, everything's done. And then, like Mr. Butler said, when they started looking at my neighbor's yard, and they looked at mine again, here we are. And they said, well, we made a mistake, it should have been ten and ten, not ten and five, so here we are.
Gentlemen, any questions? Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing, is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chair, I approve to, I move to approve Major Pudd Revision for File RZ one nine zero nine zero one.
You'll hear a second.
Second.
With condition?
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries four zero. Mr. Butler, File RZ one nine zero nine zero two, P one to S one.
Yes, a request for rezoning from P one and R two to S one for the entire property at forty-five seventeen, forty-five twenty-one Columbia Road and one fourteen Laurel Land Extension. Request for proposed athletic field, gymnasium, and associated parking. Those are the three properties in question, you get on the north side of Columbia Road, just down from Glanora Drive. Currently shows the zoning of the property, again, you'd have one piece on P one, and the remainder is on R two. Out to the north, you have predominantly R two zoning as well. To the east, you have C one commercial zoning. Then to the west, you have TR, Townhouse Residential. And then to the south, across Columbia Road, you have both Trinity Baptist Church and also the development. There's an aerial view of the site, again, undeveloped at this time, does have a one house right there that will be rental during the first phase. It was an existing site, and also the plat of the three properties. So their request is for an athletic field, shown here, a gymnasium, and then also parking for the site. They have looked, have proposed phasing this development. The first thing that would come in would be the athletic field itself. You'd have the drive that's shown here, would come in as a gravel drive first, and they have parking, this grass parking, basically in this area back here. A second phase would be to pave most of this parking here, then also add lights and bleachers to the athletic field. Last phase is for the gymnasium, shown at the back, and also completing the remainder of the parking. We go to the next slide, you can see the overall plan for the site. One of the things in terms of the buffers on the site, they do have a thirty-foot buffer on this side of the property here, and also they have a ten in this section, or, excuse me, a ten in this section and a fifteen along the front. The biggest issue here is that the lights that are, the lights and noise from the athletic field and how that would impact the TR property to the west. In terms of future land use, it is within the Bella Activity Center, which does permit commercial uses and also civic uses. So, you know, the expansion of a church into this does fit within that. It's not really normally what is seen, you normally you see a church that has this, you know, adjacent to it. Being across the street is a little different. Again, our, overall, the use itself is fine. However, we do have some concerns about the lights, particularly how those are designed. They have said in their narrative that they will shield them, that there will not be any issue with adjacent properties. We have seen that be a problem in the past, so we do have a condition that speaks to that, and you're requiring a photometric plan, showing that it's one foot cannot less of the property line, and also having them shielded and directed away. Again, using modern LED lights, that is feasible. You know, again, the problems that we've seen in the past were using older style lighting. But again, that is a concern from staff, so we do have that condition. The other thing is the timetable of the entire development. You know, the first phase, which is the actual athletic field and also the gravel drive, that's what's happened immediately. Typically, we do allow some churches to use gravel and things like that, it's usually more in the rural part of the county. So again, having a proposed access driveway that's, there's not really a clear timeline on phase two, so we have provided a condition that, within eighteen months of approval by the board commissioners, that proposed access driveway will be paved. So those are the two issues with the actual site itself. In terms of the building, that we haven't seen the gymnasium, we've seen a description of it, which works in this case, but we do have a request for a condition that requires a review and approval by the planning commission prior to building permit approval. And lastly, during the site plan approval, we do request the combination plat be submitted for those three properties. Accurate staff recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions of staff? Is the applicant here this evening? Yes, sir, would you like to come forward and give us any additional information? Please give us your name and home address.
My name is Pastor Matthew Moore, I'm the pastor of Trinity Baptist Church. Home address is three three five five Tom Bartles Road in Abbling, Georgia. Ladies and gentlemen, I just would like to say thank you very much for the opportunity to be able to speak and consider this for us tonight. Trinity has had just excessive growth over the last few years, and we're out of property. Wembley's located immediately to our left, and Oak Ridge and additional neighborhoods are to our right. We don't have any opportunity to get additional property. And the property across the street has set adjacent for multiple years, it became a dumping site. It had been dumped on for a very long time, just all kinds of trash. We went ahead and did get to clear that up based upon the recommendation from Columbia County, so that we would go ahead and already start making immediate improvements to the property. We think that the conditions that have been offered to us are very feasible. We want to make the property as usable as we can possibly have as quickly as we can. But we would like to address the concerns that were given to us and suggest that this isn't new for us. We have a field that's already used as an overflow parking lot for our church that has been there for twenty years with lighting next to our adjacent neighborhood, and we haven't had any complaints of noise violations, of lighting infringement upon anybody's property. We would be willing to try to get even our neighbors' testimonies if that became necessary to show that we've been compliant neighbors as a church to our community. We're trying to reach these people, that we wouldn't want to be offensive to them.
Can you, can you discuss with some, and clarify what uses you're going to have for the athletic field?
Absolutely, we will utilize it for only church events, mostly church events that we continue to do, that we have. In the future, we would like to be able to develop it for soccer field, football use that we have, to expand our additional properties that we have. The parking lot will allow us to be able to transport across the street and be there in the parking lot so that we're not walking. We don't want any pedestrians crossing Columbia Road, of course. Right now, we have to utilize extra parks that Columbia already provides. We try to utilize Patriots Park, which is up the road from us a little ways. We know that there's a development plan for Blanchard Park as well that we could utilize for some of our training, but we would like to be able to utilize the field right across the street since the church does have it. And then, as we do require greater space for fellowships and get-togethers for our church, this will become very usable for us in the future.
How do you feel about the eighteen-month timeline to have it paved?
To pave the driveway portion for us, we, I was just speaking to our executive pastor, we have several of our executive staff here with us today. And once we receive the narrative, we believe it's very possible, we want to move on it as quick. We need to develop it, we need to utilize it as a church sooner than later. But we would like to have it done as soon as possible, but no later than the eighteen months that's been suggested.
Gentlemen, any other questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Pastor. This is a public hearing, is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve RZ one nine dash oh nine dash oh two, with conditions.
You'll hear a second. Okay? Discussion? All in favor? The approve carries four zero. Ms. Boltie, File RZ one nine zero nine zero three.
Yes, sir, this is a request for a major revision to an existing S one special zoning off Parham Road. This property is located almost at the county line off Gordon Highway and is currently zoned S one. It's been through a couple revisions with us here at the county. It was originally zoned S one back in nineteen ninety-nine for motor speedway and overflow parking. That is not the current use on it, that was revised in twenty fourteen for an office warehouse complex, which you can see there on the aerial. The original narrative was rather vague on uses. Kind of specified it would be used for office warehouse purposes and gave a few examples. We did have a subsequent revision last year to clarify that further. So in twenty eighteen, the uses were revised to contractors' offices, research and design studios, and a coffee shop, which was the driver of the revision at that time. The existing site, it is, I believe, twelve spaces total in the two buildings. The driver of this request is the applicant is working on fitting out a couple of these spaces for a dog grooming and training business. That obviously did not fit under the current narrative and the current allowed uses. So we have worked with the applicant to try and broaden the allowed uses on the site to include uses that were appropriate. This property is not served by either county water or sewer, so they are on a well and a septic system. That does limit what they can do on this property as far as water usage and being able to handle the inflow and outflow for the businesses. But we have worked to expand the list to include, you know, the contractors' offices and the research studios that were already in there, but also to include some supporting industrial uses, welding machine shops, some cabinet-making furniture businesses, professional offices, the dog grooming, of course, that they're already working with, educational offices, some indoor recreation that includes gyms, yoga studios, things like that. Some appliance repair, photography, arts and crafts, and similar businesses like that that are appropriate in this type of facility and that can be handled on the well and the septic system. The health department has reviewed this list, they have indicated that the existing system can handle these uses. This property is located in the neighborhood's character area. It is already, of course, zoned and developed for commercial purposes, so we have attempted to address uses that were appropriate in this area that wouldn't impact any of the neighbors. That is recommending approval.
Gentlemen, any questions of staff?
So I have to ask the question, anything that requires fire suppression, can a well support that type of system? That required to be, would a fire suppression system run properly, be fed by well water versus being by city water or the pressure of the city water?
Be up to an engineer to design the system with the well had enough flow, enough pressure, they could put a booster pump on it, booster tank, storage tanks? Possible if an engineer did a full study, so to say yes or no now, can't do it.
Last one we, oh, we had a couple of weeks ago.
Cabinet shop?
Cabinet shop, we required them to wire that they plug into city water.
Can you go to the aerial view of the site? So I believe these are actually for fire suppression of, I don't remember which ones they go to, but yeah, one here or the materials reclamation facility over here. That's, because you can do it, but that's a method you could use.
Just saying you're on city water, county water doesn't also, does not guarantee you have fire suppression. We've had buildings that did not meet the required fire suppression flow on county water, and they've had to have booster pumps.
Well, and it does, you know, there's a note from the fire marshal requiring proper fire suppression measures that may be required. And so I just want to make sure that everyone's thought that through process. If something specifically goes in, have somebody coming back to us asking for.
Couldn't get a variance on code, though.
Probably couldn't do that.
Sure, so the zoning does not supersede building code, so building code will dictate what goes here.
So hopefully the owner is, I'm sure the owner's thought that through, I just wanted to point that out.
Other questions? Is the applicant here? No? Okay. Is there anybody here that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve item H two G two, File RZ nineteen oh nine zero two. Three. Two G three. Oh nine.
I'd like to second one of those.
How about the last?
I'm going to second oh three.
The second has been, oh three has been.
I'd like it better to.
Made and seconded. Do I hear any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve oh three carries four zero. Mr. Butler, File RZ one nine zero nine zero four.
Yes, a request for rezoning from C one to S one for a self-storage facility at five zero six zero Hammett's Drive. Property is located on the south side of Columbia Road, intersection of Hammett's Drive and Columbia. It's the current zone of the property, again, currently zoned, C one, excuse me. Probably to the east, is zoned RA. Again, you kind of have an odd collection of zoning out here, we'll kind of get into that in a moment. Across the street, you have a mixture of RA and M two, and then to the west, you have M two as well. South, you have S one, for existing church. There's an aerial view of the site, again, undeveloped at this time. Also, the aerial showing 3D view of it, and also the view along the different streets, showing you the existing conditions of the site. Flat of the property. So the request is for, again, self-storage, it's three buildings totaling seventy-five thousand square feet in total, a little bit over seventy-five thousand, seventy-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-five. So the request is for, again, self-storage. It's three buildings totaling 75,000 square feet in total, a little bit over 75,000, 75,625. Phase one is this one here. That will be a three-story high building. There will be a maximum of 65,000 square feet, fully climate-controlled. Phase two and three will be these buildings at the back. Those will be approximately 7,000 square, 7,000, 3,000 square feet. Includes both climate-controlled and traditional, non-climate-controlled units. And again, they've, they actually provided a feasibility study. I know that's been something in the past that y'all have been curious about. Building setbacks from Columbia Road is 30 feet. You can see it here. Then on High Meadows Drive is 20 feet. And then there's 20 feet on those two side property lines. So regardless of the building's site design, this is kind of what they've shown us they want to build there. Says they'll meet all Columbia County landscape requirements. This includes a 20-foot planned structural buffer along the eastern and southern property lines. They said residential lot and the church property. The actual fence would be a vinyl-coated black fence. They're going to use landscaping to provide, you know, a more dense buffer than just a fence with flats or what have you in it. With the actual materials of the building, it has, it will have a Masonry wanker brick veneer about seven feet high, but that will be stuck on earth stone colors. Maximum 25% of the building can be architectural metal panels on each elevation. Sword front windows and awnings will give added areas of interest, make it look more professional. Again, climate control can look more like an office building than the other types of storage. The two same four buildings have similar finishes on the west elevations and elevation facing south, elevations may use metal finishes. Overhead doors will be located, not visible from the public road. These landscaping is a feature screening of the site. In terms of the future land use map, this is located within neighborhood's character area. However, you have the community crossroad that's here as well. You can kind of glom onto it if you'd like to. And also the zoning of the area itself is buried, let's put it that way. You have a quarry across the street. You have concrete plants in close proximity. Have some very intense zoning and you also have some commercial zoning. This really serves as a good kind of step down from having the more industrial and then having something like this, which is fairly low traffic, but is more considered an industrial type use under our code. But again, with some of the requirements we're going to talk about in a moment, can look more like an office. The staff does think this does meet the intent of the future land use map. Again, the elevation and material board require approval of the planning commission prior to building permit being issued. I have to work with the Columbia County landscape architects to address screening of the rest of our problems from High Meadows Drive during site plan review. And one last thing, one of the things that kind of pops up during it, during review of the site plan, there may be some issue with getting around the side of the building. So during site plan, they need to show how the vehicular circulation and radius work to get around the building. It's probably not a problem, but we want to bring it up with the condition. That's clearly a staff recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions of staff?
What did you say about the metal finishing?
So it's 25% on each elevation. So they can use, I mean, it's not 25% of the whole elevations. So you take like it's 100 square feet, you can have 25 of that square footage can be metal.
Is, that's front-facing or?
On each elevation.
On each elevation. So each side.
Yeah. You can see it from Columbia or from High Meadows. But again, it's 25%. That's very similar to Evans Town Center, not from metal, but again, 25% kind of gives you some flexibility to put in different materials than...
This is not the, we had agreed to previously with one, it was metal, but it was covered with some type of stucco. This is straight out metal siding.
It's architectural metal panel, so it's not the one that has stucco on it. Again, there is a requirement for the elevation and material board to require approval by the planning commission prior to building permit being issued.
And phase two buildings are going to be similar?
What was that?
The phase two buildings are going to be similar?
Yeah, similar finishes on the west elevation and elevation facing south. So you're looking at these.
And these are going to be interior? They're going to be exterior access? Because the one, the building to the right there looks like it's going to be difficult to be interior-only.
I mean, you come in here, come around, there's an avenue gate soon. You have to come in and you're accessing it.
Right. So how about the buildings in phase two? There's going to be exterior entry?
You're going to have a combination of climate-controlled here and here. So I mean, you're going to have exterior.
So they're both going to be climate-controlled as opposed to exterior with roll-up doors and all that kind of thing?
Hold on one second. I didn't write, so I got to double check it. It was both climate-controlled and traditional. So you're going to have a combination of both. So you could have doors on this one and this is entirely climate-controlled.
Okay. Gentlemen, any questions? Is the applicant here? Yes, would you like to come forward and give us any additional information? Please give us your name and home address.
Hello, it's Lamar McCoy with SD Clifton, 4324 Wheeler Road. I'm here on behalf of Brooks Whitmire, the owner. We propose that the back building would have overhead doors, but they would be on the north side. So they would be shielded by the larger building and the 7,000-square-foot building. So we understand the code not to have any doors facing the roadways. So that's not an issue for us. We're compliant with that. We do appreciate your consideration for letting them build this project. We think it's going to be one of the better-looking buildings that's for storage that's been in Columbia County or that isn't in Columbia County yet. But we're really open to listening to your suggestions that you may have.
SD Clifton is a construction company?
Yes, sir.
What type of, what type of construction?
We've done dealerships, churches, retail, vineyard stores.
And you're representing the owner. Where's the owner?
The owner's here, Brooks Whitmire.
Where's the owner from?
Oh, he's from here in Augusta. He's actually been a business, he owned Eagle Paint and Body over in Grove Town in Columbia County for years.
So the question I've asked is, why is there such a run on storage facilities in the Augusta area?
I really couldn't answer that question.
Maybe he can come up with a question.
Brooks Whitmire. I don't know why it's such a run. It's just in the past, probably 15 years, big corporations have decided that it's a good investment. That's when they kind of started popping up. That scared me. That's why I did spend a whole lot of money on a feasibility study. Said that absolutely...
I read that study cover to cover. Interesting. I also did some of my own.
Can I borrow that one?
Sure. You can pay me what you paid her.
Oh, wait a minute.
But, you know, if we do the count and it says, it says point, no, it says 9.4% of the population uses self-storage. If we take the population that's listed in the study, which is approximately 30,000, 33,000 live in the area that's... We get down to the number, we get down to, I can find the exact number, but list of five area, five-mile radius. Then we start counting the number of units that are, have been, that are existing and have been approved. We're getting, we're getting a capacity, and you're talking about building out in somewhere that doesn't have a ton of residential space. So what's the long-term play on this? What's your vision for this?
As far as, well, build up and build another one.
Fill it up and build another one.
Right. Any other questions? Yes, sir. I think your last answer may have answered this question, but it's going to be a franchise.
I don't know that I'd ever franchise it. I always have plans. I think at some point, look at building another. I wouldn't franchise.
You're not doing this developing for a franchise?
Oh, no, no.
And this is your first, first type of facility like this? Or do you have a first storage facility?
Have you spoken to any of the neighbors around about what they feel about this?
Not a lot of neighbors around. There's a lady that lives immediately adjacent to the property. I've actually spoken to her about purchasing her property. I wouldn't do that.
When did you do that?
Probably a minute and a half.
She's been by my office three times and says she's been trying to get in touch with you for a year.
Really? I pulled into her...
She FedExed something to you yesterday that you should have gotten today. She actually works for FedEx. So she's my delivery person, so she comes in and out of the office. So she's warned me out on this.
Well, that's, I hope it's good, but yeah, I mean...
She wants to sell the property.
I assumed it would. She said, "I'm the owner."
I mean, she wants to sell the property, honestly. So she's a motive. In fact, I've got a letter here. I'll read into the record from her, so...
So I'm expecting something from FedEx tomorrow, you said?
Today. You're supposed to get it by noon today. Okay. We need to call FedEx. They absolutely, positively didn't get it there overnight.
That's right. Somebody deserves a refund.
So anyway, so any other questions? Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward and speak either for or against this particular project? With that, I will, I will go ahead and read this in for the record. This is from Libra Jeter. She lives at 5670 Columbia Road. She's the neighbor that's between this property and the church. Says, "Hello, my name is Libra Jeter. I reside at 5670 Columbia Road, Grove Town, Georgia. I've been living at this address since August 2004. I've been made aware that the property located at 5060 High Meadows Drive, Grove Town, Georgia, owned by Mr. Whitmire, is currently under review to be zoned for commercial use. I spoke with Mr. Whitmire about a year ago and I was asked if I would be willing to sell my house. I made him an offer, but he never got back in touch with me about the matter. I'm concerned that if he is allowed to build a business next door to my residence, it may affect me trying to sell my property in the future. I've invested time and money at my residence and I don't want to take a loss in the end. Signed, Lisa Jeter." So I'd like to submit that for the record and, gentlemen, any other discussion that we need to have? Nobody wants to come forward. I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table. Chairman, I move to deny the application.
I'll second.
Second. Okay. Gentlemen, any discussion? I think with a denial, we need to, we need to have conversation.
Well, I think that, I think that we have approved a line share of facilities like this. Although I will give Mr. Whitmore credit. He's probably the only developer that's put it in a location that I feel best suits that type of facility. We've got a lot of them that are in, that, a lot of high-end type areas that storage. But numbers, the volume, going to saturate this market. That's my opinion and that's my research, but...
Chairman, I would agree with sentiment. Been a topic that's been discussed nine months that I've been on this. And I will, I will state that drawings do look appealing, probably more appealing than some other facilities we've been presented. I do believe.
Any other discussion? All in favor of denying? File RZ 190904. Okay. All opposed? Okay, so motion fails. Two-two. So we'll need a substitute motion.
Motion to table.
What would that do? What do we table?
Tabled to get a quorum or have five commissioners, because I have a feeling we're going to stay at two-two. And whatever motion comes up is going to, is going to fail.
I would be in favor.
Also gives time to work with that lady.
So before we do that, so we're at loggerheads. We're going to be at two-two regardless of what the vote is going to be, to approve or deny. We're going to be two-two. Okay. Okay. So we need a date to table it, too.
I would propose we table it to the next meeting.
Okay.
September 19th.
Okay. So substitute motion is to table?
Before we, before we say that, 100% sure. Covered by them?
Says he's going to be here. Now, physically, I mean, you know, I mean, he's three weeks post-op on a knee replacement. He's still swelling.
In respect to the applicant, we don't draw this out.
Maybe, maybe not more than October 1st. Soon. Why don't we try next meeting, just in the interest of time for the applicant, so we don't string them out and we get a decision one way or the other? So the motion is to table until September 19th?
Yes.
Okay. Go here a second.
I'll second that.
Okay. Okay. All in favor of table until the 19th? Motion carries four zero. All right. Mr. Butler, file RZ 190905.
Request for a major pot revision at 708 Williamson's Ridge. I'd reduce building setbacks on a property that's currently zoned, planning in development. It's in Jones Creek. Again, shows the location of the property on Williamson's Ridge on the south side of the creek. Again, it's in Jones Creek. Jones Creek is zoned, planning in development. So everything around it is in planning, planning in development. At the aerial view of the site, you can see, what are we talking about tonight? Is the pool that's here, kind of see the deck that's there, and then you can't see the fence. We'll have some pictures of that here in a moment. And it shows aerial view of the site. Also, the existing house on the property. Also, the plat, again, the, the, or there shows you where the, where the property is. Light sketch. So with the application that we have before you tonight, you have a pool that was built approximately 25 to 30 years ago. It was within the side setback. Again, Jones Creek has setbacks of 10 feet on the side and the rear. So that's been there for quite some time. Again, it's part of the revision. Go ahead and kind of take care of that. And it was built at a time that setbacks probably weren't being checked that much. At the back of the property, you have a deck that's here, kind of going down. Well, that is within the rear setback. Certainly, at this point, it is, it's out of it once it gets here, the deck, because it does have elevation to it. You'll see in a moment, it's at least a foot high. It is considered a structure. Kind of the whole emphasis for this is the fence is at the back of the property. At its highest point, it is nearly nine feet high. It's approximately eight feet, six inches, give or take a little bit. It does drop down to a little over seven feet at its shortest point here. There is a fence that goes the whole length down the side there. The deck was built approximately 2013. The fence was built recently, earlier this year. Again, the issue, though, is that we have a fence that's over, it's, again, it's over six feet high in the building setback. So because that has to meet the setback, that's the reason for the revision. So it had the existing structures. Again, this is the fence on the side. It's really not the concern here. Although it does reach over the six feet at the corner there. On the back of the property, again, this is where it's nearly nine feet high. You can see it does have at the base of it. It's, it's just the quality of the picture. It's not the best. It's a scan of a, printout of a photo, so it's not great. Plus, the, I'll go ahead and tell you the...
Got excited there for a minute.
Yeah, that'd be, that'd be fun. But also, the, when it goes from the computer to our monitors, it changes colors on you, too. So it's, it's always fun to look at it side by side. We're getting off track on that. So the, you do have at the base, you have lattice work that allows for, you know, water and leaves to get through. Kind of a unique solution. Normally, you do see fences can kind of back up water and cause drainage issues. So this does kind of solve some of that problem. At the back of the property, you can see the deck here. One thing, too, with this, we'll kind of get into in a moment, that even with the height of the fence, it still doesn't provide, you know, maximum privacy for the owner of the property. You can still stand up, you know, any normal-sized man can stand there and see over the fence. So it doesn't, probably total privacy, if we're being honest. However, overall, you know, the placement, the pool is not an issue in our, in our, in our opinion. It's been there for a long time. Hasn't caused any problems. And there's lots of pools in Columbia County. They're in building setbacks that were built a long time ago and also maybe recently. They don't meet those setbacks. That's not an issue. The deck itself, while it does kind of, it does kind of cause a bit of an issue with the height of it. Been there for a while. Not really a huge concern. It could be reduced in height to kind of call, have some privacy. The fence, because the rear property does slope downward, a higher fence does provide you more, more privacy than one that's only six feet high. We have given many variances for a higher fence we place, you know, lower down on a, on a slope to provide more useful property for a homeowner. So again, that is okay in our opinion. So in terms of the actual lattice work, the combination of lattice work and the fence itself, Columbia County considers that a fence. The lattice is... uh, Clemming County considers that a fence. The lattice is still considered a fence, even though, you know, some HOAs may say it isn't. Um, so there's a question about should the lattice be there or not? We would defer to the HOA, kind of make that decision. That concludes staff recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions of staff? Okay, before we start the public hearing, I understand this could be a bit of an emotionally charged issue between some of the parties involved. I'm going to ask that if you do come forward to address this body, you address the commissioners and not anybody in the gallery, and that you treat each other with respect and make your comments respectful as well. So with that being said, uh, is the applicant here this evening? Please give us your name and home address.
Mike Brown, 708 Wellington Ridge, Evans, Georgia.
Anything additional you'd like us to have?
I don't think additionally. I just, I want to thank you guys for considering it. Um, I do have our HOA president with us and a few neighbors. If you had any questions, I'll offer myself up.
Gentlemen, any questions? Okay, thank you, sir. We may call you back up. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Yes, sir. Please come forward and give us your name and home address.
Strip Nanny, 4113 Heritage Ridge. Uh, at the time of the approval of this structure, I was the chairperson of our agricultural, agriculture control, I said that wrong, architectural control committee. Um, we visited the site twice.
For Jones Creek. For Jones Creek.
For Jones Creek, yes, sir. We visited the site twice with a total of 10 of our 14 board members. Uh, unanimous approval due to, as he mentioned, the height, this six-foot board on top of about two and a half feet of lattice for a total of about eight and a half feet. Uh, the severe slope of the property, as you stand behind it looking at the fence, feel like the fence is higher. I mean, it's taller than me looking up. But as he also mentioned, when you're in the pool area looking over, it looks like about a three-foot fence, and we examined it from all areas. The original fence that he replaced had deteriorated badly and was in need of replacement, so it's a much better structure. Uh, obviously, new wood, and like I said, uh, 10, 11 of our total 14 voting board members were there and approved it unanimously, unanimously on two separate site visits.
Gentlemen, any questions? Okay, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table. And before we, before we take a motion, from what I understand, whatever the decision is tonight, any future decisions regarding this fence go to the Jones Creek Homeowners Association as opposed to coming back here? As long as it doesn't involve height?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Any sort of design question? Changing of lattice or what?
Gentlemen, we need a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the rezoning for the major pot revision at file RZ 190905.
Go here a second.
Okay.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 4-0. All right, uh, Ms. Balti, file RZ 190906, and will you also have the additional item that we added?
Yes, sir. Um, and it's up to you if you'd like those presented back-to-back, or if you want to take a break in between.
Could we take them concurrently?
If you would like to.
Gentlemen, would you all like to take these two concurrently?
Yes.
Okay, please do.
Good, um, we'll tackle the rezoning first. This is a request to rezone from RA Residential Agriculture to R2 Single Family Residential at 1200 Old Louisville Road. Um, this is only for a portion of the property. This is for the portion located on the north side of Reynolds Farm Road at the intersection with Old Louisville. Again, currently zoned RA, uh, residential agriculture, as is everything surrounding it. Um, you can just barely see the city limits of Grove Town up in the corner. And there's one random S1 over here, which is a, um, was rezoned for the barbecue restaurant. A couple of you might remember that. Uh, there, this is the aerial of the property currently undeveloped. Um, and a photo of the existing site, and this is from the Old Louisville roadside. And from the Reynolds Farm roadside, um, this portion of Reynolds Farm Road is currently unpaved. Um, if this property were to be developed, um, paving of Reynolds Farm Road would be part of the requirements. Um, and we do have conditions, both from our department and from our traffic department, as to when that would have to happen. This would not pave the entire road, obviously, all the way into Grove Town, but it would cover paving of the road um, to their entrances and to the, there is a small section that's been paved by the county at the, the creek crossing, so it would tie into that existing paving. R2 also requires access to county water and sewer, or public water and sewer. Um, in this case, they do have a couple different options for getting the water. Um, they actually have options to get water from all three jurisdictions. Since this is a, a project in the county at this point, the most likely result would be they would be required to extend the county water line to this project, provided we had the, the flow rate to support it. Their only option to get sewer is to extend a, a force main to tie into sewer in Grove Town city limits. There is no county sewer really anywhere in the vicinity of this project. Grove Town has indicated that they're willing to let them do that, to tie in, even though they are not currently part of the city limits. Um, there's been discussion that they may also try to annex into Grove Town, in which case Grove Town would provide both the water and the sewer service.
And the annexation, are they going to try that as individual property owners, a, as the single owner, or are they going to wait till they develop it?
I believe they would do it as a single owner at this point, um, and they're, they're going to have to.
Easiest way.
Um, so I mean, Grove Town is up here. They're not currently adjacent. There's two additional property owners in between them and the existing city limits that they would have to work with to get that connection made. But that's something that they, they may work towards. Um, this property is located in the neighborhood's character area on the future land use map. It is right at the edge of it, as you can see. Um, that neighborhood's area is intended for a future single-family development. Um, however, we also want to take into consideration that this future land use plan is a, you know, a long-term plan. Um, it's a 20-year timeframe that we're looking at. And ideally, we'd like to see development happen closer to the center, closer to the developed areas, and work their way out to the edge, rather than skipping and starting at the edge of these areas. This project's also in a, an area with a very, with somewhat of an established rural development pattern. Um, you can kind of see from the parcelized map here, as well as from the aerial. You have several, you know, large, large lot developments already existing around this project. Um, and not as many really large tracts open for additional neighborhood development. So if, if this project moves forward, it may end up being a bit of an island in this area. Um, whereas some of the other projects we've approved in the neighborhoods' areas, while still surrounded by RA today, are in areas where neighborhoods can continue to be developed around them, where they'll be part of a, a kind of fabric of neighborhoods, if you will. Um, at this time, staff is recommending disapproval of this rezoning request. That at this time, this property is not suitable for this type of development at this density. The applicant has chosen to submit the concept plan for review at this time also. Um, we do have conditions, uh, that we have proposed if this project does move forward um, regarding providing sewer to the property and paving of Reynolds Road, um, as well as the traffic improvements that would be required on Old Louisville and Reynolds Farm Road. On the concept plan side, um, the current proposed lot count is about 334 lots. Um, this is the existing conditions map. Again, it is an undeveloped site. It is bounded on two sides by creeks and significant floodplain wetland areas that are undevelopable. Um, it also has the Georgia Power easement cutting through the site. Um, the concept plan, again, is currently 334 single-family lots. Got about 50 acres, um, that is in that floodplain wetland area and in the buffer that's not to be developed. Fairly interconnected road pattern. We do have some cul-de-sacs there. Um, see the two entrances on Reynolds Farm, one on Old Louisville. Um, again, paving of Reynolds Farm would be required with this project. They do meet the 10% of the site for R2 that has to be set aside for open space. There's a small park here that's part of that, the 1.2-acre park. Um, the rest of that is in the, the buffer and the floodplain areas. At this time, staff is recommending to table the concept plan review until the Board of Commissioners can make a decision on the rezoning. Um, tabling it to September 19th accomplishes that goal.
So any motion made will be a twofold motion.
Sure.
Both, both would be to approve, deny, or to table. Uh, is the applicant here this evening? This is a public hearing. Please come forward and give us your name and home address.
Mo Slaughter, James G. Swift and Associates, 420 Gemstone Court, Evans, Georgia.
Any additional information you'd like us to have on this?
Well, the, uh, recommendation for nonapproval, we went through several meetings. Originally came here with the PRD originally, and the density was higher, and met with some of the commissioners, and they seemed to be for it. So when we got closer to submitting it to the county, they said, "Well, we're going to need a lot more information." The owner looked at it, and the density, were able to make it still work with his plans with the less lots and having an R2 zoning with the 75s and 80s instead of the 60s and 75 and 80s we had in the other one. So he figured it'd be best just to come as a R2, because we were pretty much with the extension of the road, hopefully to Gate 6 Gordon Highway, that this area will be moving along a little faster than 15 to 20 years. He thought that the R2 zoning, speaking with the builders, that, you know, that's a product that they would like. You know, one of the little larger lots and put a, you know, a little nicer house on it. And then we'll still have to have the streetscape or the trees and sidewalks and about the little park. Wetland areas and the floodplain will be left alone. Won't have the impacts. The county has visited the site. There's no additional wetlands up in the parcel, so feel good about that with, you know, really no environmental impacts. We're willing to, of course, you know, pave Reynolds Farm as we go to those entrances. You know, adhere to any other of the conditions of the county.
Gentlemen, any questions, Mr. Slaughter?
Paving is as they go along?
Yes, so.
I understood.
Basically, the, the phasing would be they would have to pave to this first entrance um, with the development of the lots in this phase. And then as they extended back, they would have to finish the paving, um, back to where the, the current pavement ends.
Questions? Thank you, sir. We may call you back. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Yes, ma'am. Please come forward and give us your name and home address. Lady will, will bring you up next.
Good evening. My name is Ruth Nugent, and I live at 5845 Rockford Drive, which is near the proposed development, as you can see. Um.
Point out your address on, on the map here. Can we go back to an overhead?
Okay.
And you can point, and it'll give us a dot up here. We can't draw, but you can. Okay, got it.
Pretty close. Um, I'm here with my husband and my mother-in-law, who live in the neighborhood, and, uh, we were very concerned when we saw this proposed development. As the staff report noted, this is very much out of character for the current development in the neighborhood, which is very rural. And we had concerns about the clogging of traffic on Old Louisville Road, as well as, um, the potential for the stormwater runoff plans, which we're unclear on. None of us are professional developers, uh, have to say. We did read the staff report with great interest, and I think they have probably stated our objections better than I possibly could. So in the interest of time, we're just letting you know that, uh, as neighbors of the project, we have concerns about the effects on water, about the traffic, um, and about the plopping this sort of development down in what is essentially a rural area at this time.
Gentlemen, any questions? Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you coming out. Yes, ma'am. Please come forward. Give us your name and home address.
Uh, I am Karen Fogg. That's F-O-G-G. I live at 4,000 Greenbrier Drive, uh, own the property, and that would be, um, this property right here that is adjacent to the proposed development. So, uh, first I want to say that I am a business owner. I own Dogwood Designs Art Studio. It is registered at my business. I mostly operate in Harlem. I'm also a veteran, um, and have worked on base. I've also, uh, lived in DC, Northern Virginia, before coming down here to Georgia within the last couple of years. So I have a lot of perspective on, um, the development that is occurring in the county. And I also have vested interest because of where my property is located specifically, up against this new development. And, you know, my, uh, concerns with the rezoning from, uh, residential agriculture to an R2 are significant. Uh, you know, for one, I moved my family from the Crawford Creek neighborhood here in Evans, which I love. It was a great neighborhood. But I wanted to get them out into the country. I don't, you know, did not, uh, know at the time that this type of development might occur right on my back porch, essentially, with only the creek dividing us and the floodplain. And, you know, it impacts the type of activities that we want to do on the property, which is a four, approximately four-acre property. Also, you know, concerns for, you know, traffic, water, all these types of things. Even bigger concerns would be, you know, the annexation potentially into Grove Town. Um, that is not something that I want, and having talked to everybody else, uh, multiple neighbors on the Greenbrier Drive Road, they do not want this to happen as well. Um, most of these individuals, these families, have lived on this road for 20 to 30 years. They have vested interest in being in the county. That's why they live there. Um, not to be a part of the Grove Town city limits. I'd also like to say that, you know, I understand that development is going to be essential based on the types of, uh, you know, the, the workflow that is coming down from DC to, uh, this area for Fort Gordon. It's going to have to happen. But leaving it as, you know, a residential agriculture, uh, lot, you know, provides, what, approximately 77 homes that can be built on this property based on the two-and-a-half-acre guidelines that the county has for RA development. That's a big difference between 77 and 350-something. The amount of population that that would bring in to this little area, the road system, um, the traffic just trying to get to base. I mean, that was another big reason for me to move, was because I have two small children that I take care of on my own, and I need to be able to get to work, uh, quickly. And, um, that type of traffic would end up causing significant issues, that left turn onto Gordon Highway. You know, even if you put in some turning lanes, it's not going to help. And the perspective I want to bring in, from living in Northern Virginia, is I saw this exact same thing happen up there, where expansive growth happened, uh, before the county could really make decisions to protect the culture and the environment around the Leesburg and Luckets area, if anybody is familiar with those areas. And it lost a lot of the, um, that home, you know, uh, family vibe. Um, traffic got out of control. Deaths were happening all the time on Route 15. And that is what, you know, those types of risks are things that we have to take into consideration with this type of expansive rezoning. And, you know, to further, uh, state my case is that, you know, just that I stand against it being, uh, rezoned to R2. I believe that it should stay as an RA, um, and have multiple neighbors I have personally talked to who agree with that, and, you know, can further, you know, state the case at another time if necessary, um, with, you know, more evidents and details and, and people here, if that's required. But I think we have an opportunity to be very, um, you know, dedicated in how we go about, uh, you know, developing the county to fit Fort Gordon's needs, but do it in a way where we don't lose what, what we have down there in that area. For those up in Evans, you may not realize or know the wonderful place that is Harlem. And essentially, I consider myself to be Harlem. I'm on Harlem Water. I have a Grove Town zip code, but my business runs out of Harlem. Um, you know, and, uh, we are about family. We're about tradition. We're about these types of things. This type of neighborhood, you put 355 homes in there, the types of families you're going to be gearing this towards are transient military families who are going to come here, they're going to live for a couple of years, and then leave. It's not the types of families where if it's two and a half acres, you know, and everybody's coming here because this is their. and everybody's coming here because this is their dream home. I mean, that's why I bought my property on Greenbrier, because it was my dream home to raise my kids on. And I would hate to see us lose that environment because, you know, whatever the reasons may be, to have 355 homes built on the acreage versus 77. I mean, it's pretty straightforward, most likely, what that's about. And, you know, without having all the information in front of me, those are the assumptions that I make.
Thank you, ma'am, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that'd like to speak either for or against? Yes, sir. Please come forward. Give us your name and home address.
My name is James Stang. I live 1449 Reynolds Farm Road, which is exactly the junction where they want to enter the subdivision. I agree with everything the lady before me said, but my reasoning is a little more selfish right now as I have a well approximately 30 feet from that spot. On groundwater, we're all on wells. I also have issue with their survey lines. While I have not seen a detailed map of their survey, every, I have seen their marks they left and their banners. That particular mark doesn't come anywhere near every county map that I've seen. And every flat seems to be cutting an awful lot off my property. Those roads are not equipped to handle that kind of traffic. Old Lewisville Road is already too fast and too much traffic. Reynolds Farm Road, our commissioner, Road Commissioner does a good job, but he can't keep it. I see an environmental disaster in the making, trying to run sewer down through that wetland across the creek. I just don't think...
Thank you, sir.
Thanks for your time.
Is there anyone else that'd like to come forward and speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chair, I move to disapprove, file RZ 190906, rezoning from RA to R2.
Okay, and how would you like to handle the additional item?
I think it would be disapproved, along with...
So, you would move to disapprove both items as they were presented?
I would.
Go ahead, a second.
Okay.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of disapproving both items? Motion to disapprove carries 40. Ms. Bolti, file RZ 190907.
Yes, sir. This is a request for rezoning off Old Lincolnon Road from C2 General Commercial and S1 Special to S1, with a major S1 revision for the portion of the property already zoned. So, it's a little complicated. This property is located on the west side of Old Lincolnon Road, adjacent to the lake and the core property. This is actually a functioning marina. And the property is currently split-zoned. The front portion was rezoned to C2 back in 1991 for a boat sales facility. The rear of the property was rezoned S1 in 2011 for open-air boat and RV storage. Surrounding properties are primarily R4, with the exception of the existing marina, which is also S1. Now, this is an aerial of the site. You can see the existing boat dealership operating out of the front of the property. The rear has remained undeveloped at this time. This is a picture of the existing site and existing building. The approved site plan with the S1 was for just simply an open gravel parking lot for the storage facility. The applicant is proposing instead to do enclosed storage. So, the major revision is to revise the site plan to include those proposed buildings. They are including 30-foot buffers against the two residential sides of the property, where they are adjacent to other houses. On the north side, there's not a proposed buffer that's adjacent to the existing marina. It's very similar use. And staff is comfortable that there's not a buffer really required between these two properties. The plan includes a total of four buildings. The three perimeter buildings are to be fully enclosed. The center one is basically just a roof structure that's a covered storage space. They are also proposing an additional driveway for the storage area on the north side of the property. That does keep the driveway away from any of the residential homes in this area. And that driveway will be gated and under security monitoring. The original staff recommendation was to rezone this entire property to S1, just to clean up the split zoning. We don't generally like to leave properties split-zoned. The applicant did indicate last week that for purposes of their loan for buying the property, they do need to leave the front part C2. So, this is the adjacent property, again, used as part of the marina for their storage, and very similar type of use. Not really a need to buffer against that property. This is in the rural character area on the future land use map, intended for very low-density residential agricultural uses and supporting civic uses. This property's been in use for boat sales before, most recently for Lakeside Marine, which operated up until 2018. Continuation of the same use is appropriate, especially this close to the lake in this area. It supports the type of recreational uses you would expect out here. So, given the applicant's concerns about needing to leave part of the property C2, staff recommends disapproval of the request to rezone the C2 portion to S1, but does recommend approval with conditions of the major revision to allow the enclosed and covered storage on the rear portion of the property. The condition's just clarifying the building setbacks and the buffer requirements that they are to remain undisturbed and to be supplemented as required. And the Health Department also requested that they contact them regarding the onsite septic system for this project.
We know how long the dealership has been inactive.
Their last license was in 2018.
Okay, so we're within the year window. So, hypothetically, if it's approved tonight, that would take care of any problem they would have with their OCTAX.
If they get it in quickly.
Yeah. They're coming up on that year.
Okay. Gentlemen, any questions, staff?
This storage is gonna be boat storage.
Yes, sir.
Weather-type of storage.
And it's gonna be dry storage, run forklifts, and have multiple height bays? Or is it gonna be flat storage?
As far as I know, it's flat storage. I haven't heard otherwise from the applicant.
In addition to the group down there that's running a marina on the water, different group.
It is.
This is a public hearing. Is the applicant here this evening? Yes, sir. Would you like to come forward and give us any additional information?
My name is Nicholas Costello. I live at 6670 Ridge Road in Annapolis. And if I can clarify anything for you guys, I'm here to clarify.
The building in the back, is that you're gonna have vertical storage?
All this would be single store.
Okay. So, it's gonna be flat storage?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And the reason we moved the driveway was speaking with Will to get it away from the residential area from the, I guess, this part right here.
So, how long, so somebody has a boat and they're storing it. Call, how long is it? What's the logistics of getting it down to the water? How long does that take?
Five, 10 minutes.
Now, do y'all launch them off a trailer, or you've got a forklift? You're gonna...
Off a trailer.
From out of a cradle?
Yes.
Okay.
I used to work for this dealership from the time I was 17 years old. So, I've been trying to buy it for two years. Finally got it. USDA is requiring it to stay split, because one of them's a USDA loan and one of them's an SBA loan.
Gentlemen, any questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Yes, sir. We'll start in the front and move to the back. Give us your name and home address.
My name is Alan Reeback. My home address is 1281 Nob Creek Drive, Athens, Georgia. I am owner-operator of Clarksville Marina. It's one of four facilities we own. And I'm not necessarily for or against this development. However, I do think it's important that everyone here at this committee knows that that's the purpose that we serve, and that's the reason we've acquired the property on the lake. Corps of Engineers set aside this property to facilitate service to patrons of the lake, and that's what we do, the reason we're in business, and that's the reason we provide these types of services.
You all run the marina up at Clemson, too, don't you?
Clemson, as well as two marinas on Lake Sinclair. We have great rapport with the Corps of Engineers, and we take great pride in that. So, I don't necessarily know what the impacts of this would be on our business, but I do know, obviously, storage would be in direct competition with what we provide the patrons of this community. I will also say that...
And you realize that we're talking about property use, not competitive advantage here?
Well, absolutely, and that's the next point I'd like to make. I would hate to see someone take a business loan and realize that their pro forma was not properly calculated because of the fact that they didn't properly calculate the cost of providing the service to the customers to get the customers' boats in the waters, the water. The boat ramps that are on our property are controlled by us, and it costs money to utilize those facilities. So, I just want to make sure that everyone knows that has direct interest in this development that there will be a cost to facilitate this service on our property.
So, it benefits you?
I would say that it does not negatively impact us, but it does not directly benefit us.
You running for office, too?
It does not directly benefit us because of the fact that this is the business in which we have decided to be part of and build it.
Let me just say that I don't own a boat.
Yes.
And so, but I have been down to where your facility is, and I understand it's 100% occupied.
We are not 100%... Well, we are not 100%...
Spent some time, but the last time I was down there, it was full, it was stocked.
We're full, but we also have 30 acres with the opportunity to add another 30 acres to continue development.
So, you guys got your development approved. I think it was the first year I was on this committee. So, that's gotta be four years ago. And there was talk of a restaurant and a facility like this. Right now, what you're doing, renting the existing slips that came with the property, you're full, and there's no other opportunity. So, did move forward and build what you had said you would four years ago? Is it possible that that would benefit your business?
Build a conditional storage?
Additional storage, yes.
Which is what we're here to do.
So, that is happening.
Our business plan has not changed.
But it's not happening yet.
Realize that the point of approval from this committee, we, it took a year just to get contracting and construction completed, at which point we've continued to develop the storage based on demand within the community. I am not concerned or threatened by this. I'm just trying to make it clear that we have gone above and beyond to be on the water to provide the community these services. That's what we do. In addition, for the individual or individuals that are looking to get into business, I want to make sure they understand that there are costs to utilize our services that we provide. And one of those services is access to the lake. It's very important for those people to know that.
How many access points do you... How many are available for the public that you don't?
Many along the lake. But this being the fact that it's directly bordering our property, I can only assume that the business developer of this property thinks they can utilize that at no cost. Or maybe they have, I don't know what their business model is. I think it's important that they understand this, though.
But a private boat owner could bring their trailer up, pay a docking fee, and launch from your dock.
That is correct.
But as long as you price fairly to the general public and to this gentleman, should he move forward? You know, that's...
Well, there certainly could, there certainly would be varying rates depending on commercial or general public or annual pass versus...
I feel like this is probably a conversation I would encourage you to have with the gentleman that's applying correctly and maybe in a positive atmosphere where you guys could maybe make money at the same time.
Hey, I agree with you. There's no reason you can't work with people, but we have not been approached about this. So, this is the first time I've seen anything that was gonna happen on this property, which is why I'm not necessarily prepared to present my opinions here. I just think it's important for both the board, the committee, along with the community to understand what we do and that we are there, we're on the lake, we're active. And then it's up to you to interpret whether or not this is good for the county.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yep.
We appreciate it.
What is your capacity now? What percentage is full?
Of the existing storage, we're 100% full. But realize, we've got 20 acres to develop, and so...
So, how are you accounting for the demand of all the stuff of Fort Gordon? All these families moving in?
Well, we continue to develop, we continue to work towards our development plan.
You say you work towards your development plan, when are you gonna expand?
Well, that's something I'd love to talk with you...
Honestly, you've sat up here and made a veiled threat that you can put the guy out of business.
Oh, no, 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 no. No, no, let me be clear. There is no threat going on here.
I mean, I'm in sales. I negotiate every day, and I can see exactly what you're doing. So, if you've got a development plan that you want to throw forward, let's do it. So, if not, you know, I mean, I don't think that you need to stand up here and be the harbinger of good news, bad news, or try to advise somebody if they're trying to execute and live their dream of owning a business he's worked in since he's 17 years old. And I appreciate the fact that you're trying to do that. But if you want to do a development plan and you got all this extra space, then tell us what you're gonna do.
Okay, it, four years ago.
So, I'm not trying to get in an emotional, heated conversation.
No, and I'm not being emotional at all. I'm just being very matter-of-fact. That's the only way I know how to exist.
I would love to speak with this business developer at a time that is convenient for him and us, talk about what this means for his future business plans. I think that's prudent as a business owner to do.
Sure.
And that's what I would recommend.
Okay.
And I just, again, I had no idea about any of this until tonight, so I just wanted to get out there and say, "Hey, look, I don't want anybody making decisions without being knowledgeable."
Mr. Evans?
Could we go to an aerial? Gentlemen, good. And I'm not sure which one, but one that does show the lake access. As good as it gets. Sir, could you look at that map and point out accesses, access points that other...
No, no, there are none on this image.
Okay.
So, the, there are, we are, I can draw this, right? Well, so it goes anyway, something to this effect. Okay? And there, and we have two ramps up here in the, further up on the...
On the map?
And those are both our ramps. I just...
Can you locate on the nearest ramps, does that show the other ramps?
They'd be across on the other side of the lake.
Head Creek Bridge is three miles back towards Evans. There's a boat ramp there, home Head Creek.
Are your prices posted?
They are.
All right, well, that, sir, I'll ask you to yield the microphone to see if there's anybody else that'd like to come forward. I believe we had two folks in the back. Thank you, sir.
But to be clear, Mr. Cox, I am not threatening you or anyone.
I understand.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Gordon Robinson. I live at 4212 Old Lincolnon Road.
Who's your sidekick?
That's my wife.
Dana Robinson, 12 Old Lincolnon Road.
That little white spot you see right there, that little dark spot, that's my house. And from my bedroom window to that property line is less than 50 feet. I invested $300,000 and built my dream house, but somebody come in there and put boat shears right there. And whoever can launch a boat in five or 10 minutes, I want to see them. They fast. Anyway, my neighbor back here, he couldn't be here tonight. He had a closing. He lives out of... Anyway, uh, my neighbor back here, he couldn't be here tonight, he had a close and he lives out of town. He feels the same way. We bought these lots down here, I've been there fifteen years. If I wanted to live down there and look at that crap right there, I, I wouldn't have bought that. This is our neighborhood, this don't need to be no C two back here, if it's C two in the front, that's fine. This does not need to be C two around these two-
We're, we're not voting on C two, sir.
Well, whatever it wants to be to be these boat sheds. There's gonna be gravel, there's gonna be cars riding around there twenty-four seven, they got access twenty-four seven. You got lights burning all night long.
I have, do not have a printed photo, but I do have a photo on my phone, I am standing in my bathtub, looking out my bathroom window.
And there's your- See them orange flags?
This end of my home is elevated, can sit on my bed.
Can't see if you, you can bring it up if you-
Awesome.
I don't care what they want to plant, or a buffer, or whatever, my, my bedroom is two stories high.
Thank you. Is there any way I could get you to either text or email that to one of the staff members so it can go in the file? All right. Want to say something?
It's a very quiet road, it's a very quiet neighborhood, it's peaceful. And it's not there to experience the Evans life, that's why I moved out of town. Anybody that lives in rural areas know you go to town. We have a Dollar General now, I don't need to go to town. Um, the gentlemen down at the Marina, they're awesome people. I've seen them do amazing things from when it was called Mike's Marina, anybody that's lived here, I'm not from here originally, I'm, that was the happening place. Now it's a peaceful place. My grandchildren like it, I like it. I commend this gentleman for wanting to build his business and, and have a business of his own, that's what we all want to do. But I don't want to have what I've worked all my life for, and I've been working since I was thirteen years old, maybe not on boats, but I've been working since I was thirteen. This is where I'm gonna die, is in this house.
I'm, I'm gonna- I don't want to extend this any further because we hear you loud and clear. But there, there's two things I want to point out. I will, I do remember, uh, Mr. Reeve, I remember his hearing very clearly because it was one of my first ones. There was at least a dozen people here just having that, just railing on him about what they were gonna do and you just, you just complimented him about how, what a great neighbor he is. Um, and, and also, I mean, this is a paid money for this property, you sure wouldn't want your neighbor telling you what to do on it. Um, and that's, that's a concern that has to be considered. The rights of the property owner, um, within the walls of their property. So, so, um, I just wanted to point that out.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Yes ma'am, and we'll make you the last person and close the public hearing.
Jilla Cassidy, uh, I live at twenty thirty-four Q Court. And we have bought property, um, off of Old Lincoln Road. We were, we've worked all of our lives and saved money, my husband and myself, he's a nurse, I'm a dental assistant. And when this one property that I have looked for, for years, came available and we could afford it, we bought it in March. Um, it does have a little pond on it. I have five ducks, and I'm anxious to get out there. And this road is very quiet, believe it or not, because we have the Marina, it's super quiet. And these are some families that have lived there a long time, they've got nice properties. And we live in Tudor Branch right now, off of Columbia Road. And we've had seventeen accidents, which was, excuse me, we were here last year, I think, fighting over the entrance because we've had so many, uh, accidents. This is one of the reasons we wanted to get away, because it has grown so much and it's very hard to get out of Tudor Branch right now. So, um, I'm here tonight and I'm, I'm not for this. Uh, this is our dream house, this is where we're going to die. Um, my kids are fighting over the property already, who's gonna get it when we go? But, you know, it's, it's, it's a quiet road and we, we would like for it to stay that way if possible. Um, at the beginning of the entrance of the road from Washington, there are boat sheds right there. Um, off of Ray Owens, right all around there, there's boat sheds all over the place, right there. Um, I just don't see why we need more. Um, I think the Marina does a good job, um, they keep it clean. Um, you know, I know that there was some talk of that property that he purchased, that, that there was a lot of oil that was dumped there. Um, I don't want that stirred up. Um, so I'm just, we're just, we're not for it. We're, we're worried about our property value going down, we're about to build a three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollar house. Yes, I'm worried about my property value going down if there's more businesses on this quiet little road. Um, and just on the other side, uh, we're not on the map, but it's Washington Road, right there. Um, you know, again, there's more boat sheds there. There is a little convenience store and then you've got Fort Gordon's Recreation, um, area right there, uh, as well. Um, another concern I have is if, if he, if he builds this and it's not a success, what else can be built there under S one? And so I did pull up that and I saw all of the different things that could go in there. And I don't really think that's what our little quiet street-
One is specific.
This one is being asked for, for a specific use, nothing else but this use could go there.
Okay, all right, so-
Have to come back here.
They would, okay. All right, so I just, I just wanted to, you know, come and let you know my concerns, this is my dream house, this is my last house. And I don't want to see it, you know, being busy, and two, I want to tell you how hard my husband and I have worked. It's a overgrown pasture and we have been working it ourself with a push mower. So I've done this all summer. And so, you know, this is very special to us. We have also the adjacent property that was purchased right next to us is a twenty-year-old couple about to get married. Um, and the same thing, this is their dream house. And their, their, uh, you know, dreams and hopes of having some goats out there and chickens and all that. Not to see it just up and down traffic all day, all night, you know?
All right, thank you ma'am, we appreciate you. And with that, we're gonna close the public hearing, gentlemen, we need a motion to approve, deny or to table. After the motion.
Motion, well then I make a motion to table it.
Second.
Okay. Just, okay. I didn't second it.
Well, I, I think that, uh, we've been, we've been very thorough with a lot of previous developers regard to, um, concept. Firing them to bring. Really what we're looking at here is app with some drawings on, like marker drawings, I'd like to see something. Uh, lighting was mentioned, um, level the buffer, um, dressy, a little bit more to this project that I'd like to know a little bit out before I either, had that I'm, I-
Table both the S one and the C two?
I think the C two is off, off the, off the table.
C two is for all intents and purposes off table, I mean, it's just to remain as C two, so again, the request though does include a disapproval of the C two. Tony, because of change.
So we need to have two separate motions on this. If you're worried about the S one-
You could just table both, they don't, it doesn't matter. I mean, because again, it's, it's one request, but they are kind of splitting the twos.
Seagull, we did the right thing. Okay, so the motion's been made and seconded, any other discussion?
Yeah, before you do vote-
Yes, sir.
I think it'd be prudent if we explained very clearly what the ask is here to make sure, based on the comments I've heard from, from the neighbors, I don't think there's a full understanding of what can happen today. He walks in here tonight and never comes back, what he can do on his site today, and I think that needs to be cleared up.
Why, why don't we do, why don't we, would you mind maybe giving, well, maybe give a little bit of detail about what can be done on that property today?
When, when this was approved back in twenty-eleven, I believe, um, this was a plan that was given for the back half of the property. It's just a gravel yard, uh, for storage, got a thirty foot, thirty-five foot wide unassured buffer around it.
He could do open storage now.
He could do open storage, he can come in and get a site plan, bring in tomorrow, we'd review it and he could go and do this. Um, so the addition of the, the change in the S one requires him to come back through as a major revision. Um, so this does include, you know, the, the covered, uncovered storage and also the out, the open storage well. Um, it does still have the natural buffer, um, it does have a condition-
So the only difference between what he has and what he wants is being able to have covered storage.
Putting a building up to put these boats in a building versus having them open. That's the big change, so you're voting to allow buildings, vote no, table and vote no next week. And still build storage today and it's all open for everybody to see.
And, and, but is it fair to, to ask him to come back with just a little bit more detail about those buildings?
That is, that is truly under your purview, I just want to make sure the, the residents here around him understood what the true vote was. That they didn't leave here thinking that y'all were stopping him from expanding at all, that's, that's not the ask here.
How long have, have they been able to do this, when was this rezon-
Thousand eleven.
Two thousand eleven, okay. Thank you for bringing that point out. I agree that we need to see a better plan. I think it's fair for them to see a better. And, and I, I would, I would like to see that plan include some operational hours because you mentioned that people be coming and going around the clock, you know, what's access like, you know? Well, I, I think we'd rather see it in writing and get with staff on that if you don't mind, I mean, if I'm speaking out of turn, please tell me, gentlemen, but, but, uh, you know, is it limited access or, and just to give you some, some talking points, you know, are you the only person that has access to pull boats out of there, do people have access twenty-four hours a day? You know, just give us some of your operational plans, I think would, uh, you know, some kind of a lighting plan, you know, is this something that's gonna have motion lighting? Are you gonna have lights on, you know, all night? Um, what kind of security's gonna be involved? Um, gentlemen, any other things that you'd like to see on any kind of proposal?
And, well, you know, civic's about, uh, I'm looking out the back window Robinson's home, what's the back of the building? Buffer look like, uh, are there any, would there be any efforts to compromise on that? I, I just, as a, as a business owner myself, I mean, a lot of it's, a lot of stuff is compromised, so, um, you, you obviously can run your business now and you're trying to, to better business. Um, I, I think also being a good neighbor is part of being a good business.
Uh, with the motion to table, we're gonna need to identify a date.
Uh, is, have the information back by the next, is, is September nineteenth good enough? Let's, let's go ahead and say October third.
October third, we give you a month. Okay, so the motion, you made it-
Motion is table to Oc-, uh, the October third meeting.
Second hold. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor of table till ten thirty? Motion to table carries four zero. Mr. Butler. Oh, RZ one nine zero nine zero eight.
This is a request for a major putter vision at five zero nine zero Washington Road, it's five point six eight acre parcel. Major putter vision revised the concept plan, building size and building's property. The location of the property on the south side of Washington Road, just down from its intersection with Winifield Parkway. This is current zoning of the property, this came before y'all back in November, I think, of last year? Fall, the fall of last year, we'll put it that way. Uh, it changed it to, uh, to a, a concept plan we'll see here in a moment for storage and also, uh, retail and commercials, yes, and other, the storage project on the engine tonight. I'll show the area view of the property and currently undeveloped. And the existing site. And also the plat, the property. And the approved concepts, when this came in, uh, this was the, the concept, this was where it was, it was approved. Uh, you have a hundred forty-four thousand square foot storage facility, then you had very specific numbers on those. It blew a seven hundred, seven hundred square feet, you had the location, the access to the property here. Uh, they came back and submitted their site plan for development, uh, it changed, um, I don't want to say quite a bit, but it changed enough, it requires a major revision. Uh, one of the things with the, with the narrative is very specific on, on building sizes and also how, how these all, how these uses will all fit together. Uh, so one of the things with that is that the storage, uh, was attached to the commercial property or to the commercial building. Uh, so it's now been separated from the two. Um, you have a change in the access point to here, it was down here before. Um, then you, again, you also have, um, change to the, the overall sizes of everything. Uh, one of the reductions, the biggest reduction really is in the, uh, self-storage with a hundred forty-four thousand square feet, uh, down to a hundred and twenty thousand square feet, it's, it's been reduced by twenty-five thousand square feet. Uh, the actual, the, the retail here, um, increased up to nine thousand nine hundred square feet from seventy-five hundred square feet. And then also the building here, uh, has a maximum of sixty-eight hundred square feet, was below that on the specific site plan. In terms of the actual, of the, of the, uh, access to the property, no real concern there with the movement. Um, overall, statements for the revision, I mean, we're, we're reducing the size of a use that, uh, folks don't seem to like much of the storage. Uh, we're increasing the size of the, uh, the overall commercial development itself. Um, and we are revising, you know, the interest to it. But also, on the front half of the property, you can't really see it here, uh, there's a retaining wall that's over eight feet high and it's within a twenty-foot, uh, setback, so the reduction there would be to allow that, that, uh, retaining wall to stay in place. Uh, staff does recommend approval, uh, or actually, let me go into the building real quick. The building rendering has not changed, it's from before, again, it does show it connected, it will no longer be connected, um, in this case. Uh, there was a condition before, uh, that spoke to some of the materials on this, on the, on the building itself. Uh, metal panels with a stuck to the finish, uh, we, we have received that, uh, we're still leaving the condition in that it's required, uh, for review by staff and the planning commission. Uh, in terms of future land use, again, this has already been approved for these uses. Um, it still fits within this activity center, in our opinion. Um, the changes don't, doesn't really change them beyond that. Uh, again, approval of conditions of the request, uh, we've included the condition that was added by the planning commission in regards to all truck traffic. Uh, it's correct for eight AM, uh, use of IPS metal panels, again, we have them in our office, but I don't want to go more in depth with the applicant on that before we approve it with, uh, with staff and the planning commission. And lastly, we do have a condition, the front setback is only reduced for the proposed retaining wall on the concept plan, they can't move the building forward. Having there, and that includes staff recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff?
Yes, when, when was this originally approved?
Let's see, it was, yeah, it was, um, eighteen ten oh four, so November twenty eighteen. First one, right.
The, what type of commercial?
It is, uh, restaurant and retail, um, you do have, they are gonna put in, if you can go to the, uh, the, uh, concept plan. Believe they're adding, go to the other concept. Um, they're adding a grease trap for all three of these buildings and that one, so they could-
Be restaurants?
A bunch of restaurants. Um, so again, that's, this is likely gonna be a restaurant, that's one of those things that, outports like that will probably be one.
So the anticipated revenue drivers, commercial, more, active commercial more so.
The applicant's here, he can address that question more thoroughly than I can.
Any other questions? Mr. Lawrence, I think you're up. Please give us your name and home address, we know you, but-
Keith Lawrence, two eleven Dixon Court, Evans George, three oh eight oh nine. Um, yeah, like we talked about, one of the things we looked at, the reason the separation even came up is, was we wanted to make sure we had better access from the parking to the front of the buildings, because they do front the road on that side. And when we looked at it before, uh, the only other way to do it was to come with a, like a center aisle between them, but that limits your ability to adjust to your tenants, you know, with the demising walls and stuff like that. So that was the adjustment on that side. The driveway was slid from here down to here only because it was accessed with the, um, we had a creek still in this area and access and being able to get in and out was just tight on that side, so it slid up on that side and made a logical change on that. Of course with, and then that issue with the wall over on this side was just related to the grade on, on there, on that issue on that side. And, and we don't intend to move anything else forward except for the retaining wall, just to make, and that was the issue with the, uh, eight foot on that side. So overall, I mean, it's, it's a reduction in the, um, the self-storage on there. Um, well, I mean, the enclosed climate control storage, and you know, one of the big things we heard from, when we did our public meetings was to be able to figure out a way to increase the, um, retail, commercial component. I think the re, to answer your question on the grease traps is, we ended up with an issue over when we did the market, we had more restaurants wanting to go in there than we had grease traps, and the way we got it set up, you have to have a grease trap for each individual business, you can't share them. So that's done anticipation to give us the flexibility on that side.
Did you reduce the parking spaces? Did you reduce the parking spaces?
I don't think, uh, no, it would have been, it's all per code, everything's.
So it's up, so.
Yeah. We, there's no, you know, we're not asking for any variance on the required parking in there. So, but the, really, I mean, the driver, obviously, is the storage. To answer your question on there, that's the big component on there, on that side. But the, you know, again, it was just the site plan allowed us to, a little bit of flexibility on the, uh, retail commercial. We felt like that was going to be a good thing to do. We had, you know, most deposit, most of the comments we got were just, you know, to increase the restaurant space.
So the traffic of the entire commercial space, you think it's going to be the retail?
Between the.
Financial traffic, of course, but the active use of it.
It'll, it'll be the retail commercial. That's, you know, the, the storage itself doesn't generate a tremendous amount. So you're, and you're only increasing, I think, the plan actually only shows about nine hundred more square feet of retail commercial. But we wrote that, we wrote our narrative very specific, which was great, but it didn't give us any flexibility, uh, situated on that. And, you know, and, and staffs, um, when we come to you guys with the concept plan, we generally don't like to modify it any. And because we moved the traffic flow pattern, that triggers, you know, on that side as well.
Butler and I were, were speaking about this earlier and we noticed a, a strange number on here and I wonder if you could, could help me with my math. I've, I've got a southeastern conference education, so I'm, I'm a little slow on math here. Um, you reduced the overall square footage by what, twenty thousand feet? But your leasable space went down by thirty some odd thousand?
Yeah, when we did the.
How does that happen?
Because that didn't account, when we had the original layout, we actually went back and we did, we had to take out for the hallways, you had to take out for the, for the elevators. So the true leasable space was lower than what we originally said to begin with. If that makes sense. It wasn't, so we've gone through and we've done engineering plans and the product mix and everything. We've gone through that detailed study on the floor plan. We actually wanted to give you guys the actual true leasable space. If, most buildings, even the ones you saw earlier today, probably haven't accounted for that with the square footage that they're asking for.
And it was University Kentucky, not, not a fine Georgia school. That's.
Chairman, I was about to ask, Kentucky is in the SEC?
Yeah.
Northern end.
Okay, I went to Georgia Tech, so we feel the same way. ACC, I mean, we got the same recognition. It's all right. You know, I have to go to school somewhere.
All right. Gentlemen, any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there a public hearing? Is there anyone like to speak either for or against? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Marlena.
Keith, how you doing? Good. I appreciate that this is an opportunity to comment in. I know this.
For the folks that don't know you, please give us your name and home.
Sure. Um, it's Marlena Bergeron. I'm at twenty-five forty-five Willow Creek Court. I'm an outdoor enthusiast as well as a vested member of the Uchi Creek Green, Uchi Creek Greenway. Um, I, I have one question that I'd like to ask first, if I can kindly get an answer to it before my timer starts for my comments. Uh, one of the things that I noticed, uh, on the narrative this time was that this project is going to disturb some waterways. It's in the wetland. It's deemed by FEMA as a high-risk flood zone. I was wondering if it's received its correspondence from the U.S. Army Corps of Engineering about the aquatic resource delineation verification. Was that report given or was it waived? Okay, and I noticed you are fifty feet up from the Uchi Creek. It is farther down there, but there were, there was a delineation of a zone AE which is deemed by FEMA as high-risk flooding. Okay. Okay, and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineering doesn't? Okay. Okay, so, that being said, you know, as much as I'd love to lead us all through, um, a sing-along to Joni Mitchell's Big Yellow Taxi. Uh, you don't always know what you got till it's gone. They pay paradise and put up a parking lot. Thank you, dear. But I think it's more important to comment on some of the things I've already heard tonight. First, I, I loved your prayer, um, Mr. Evans. That was really, really thoughtful and I love that you included our friends along the eastern coast as well as, uh, the environment. Um, I love that my commissioners are noting about the storage saturation. I, I feel so much better hearing that you are looking out for us and you are noticing the same things that we are. You guys on staff are amazing. Thank you for your thoughtful review of all of these. And I just only wish there was a date stamp on it where for the development in, um, Harlem that it said, you know, you're good for five years. You don't have to worry about this anymore, or you're good for ten years. But I just feel like we're all kind of having the same experience where we're seeing our landscape change before our eyes. I know this public opportunity is about the construction of the buildings, their footprint and making, um, them detached and retention wall, but I don't want to miss out on this opportunity to retain at least a portion of the natural beauty that's wrapped up in that five and a half acre. As long as some trees are standing, I'm going to speak for their preservation, for the people who live there and enjoy it, for the wildlife, for the property values, as well as for the future that's going to need them. I also want to keep a green corridor for the Uchi Creek Greenway. I noticed in the narrative, there was a generic mention of our Vision twenty thirty-five, that this would be bikeable and pedestrian-friendly and compact. But the way it's built is going to have our cyclists that come off of the phase from William Fue have to go all the way around on the sidewalk to get back on the Uchi Creek face. I'm going to let my, um, colleague Jason speak more about that, but I think that that's important. The other thing to me is that, uh, you're doing a wonderful job with the building codes. We're enforcing high-quality building and site design. But there's no environmental conservation codes. There are no ordinance for commercial development to conserve the existing environment. And it is painful to see huge established hardwoods and pines replaced by these dwarf grape myrtles that are, you know, shoulder height for me, waist high for you, and these landing strips of chemically-treated grass. Those are not going to replace the majestic skyline, the majestic profile that we had. Construction, whether it's residential or commercial, that interfaces with the existing environment will appreciate in value. Those restaurants would be so much more fun if they faced outward and celebrated some of the trees, if you were able to retain some of those buffers. The fact that you might have a chance to thoughtfully craft passages and sightlines to natural or culturally significant resources. That would be invaluable in economic and intrinsic terms. I know the language of money speaks loudest in this room, but valuation within a community is multifaceted. It's not only economic, it's scientific, it's historic, it's.
I'm going to stop you right there. Uh, I hear, I hear folks say a lot that, that money is what drives. I had, I had a conversation, I actually had, had lunch with a developer last week that's building a fifty million dollar apartment complex over by Riverwood.
That's a big one.
He eliminated two buildings because he found a couple of sixty-foot tall magnolias and some large oak trees. So he's costing himself a significant amount of money.
That's, that's awesome.
So I want to take exception with what you said. There are people that pay attention to what's going on with, you know, regardless of it's going to cost them money or not.
Well, I think that's wonderful. I love that developer that did that.
Well, while we have the floor, I just want to point out that the, the buildings do face out.
And the buildings do face out, but they're going to clear everything.
Well, but you said if they faced out, they would have more character and they said there's a walkway to go out. They face out.
The restaurants will have the street?
They have the street.
Okay. I mean, I, I know this development is going to happen. I guess what I'm trying to make clear is that, um, that this is where we live and this is part of our identity. There's no mistaking it. And Columbia County's current business plan for commercial developments in many places has been retrofitting our lush and bucolic area into anywhere USA. I mean, this is a beautiful construction. It's going to have beautiful facades. But to me, there will always feel something that's a little trivial about it, a little sterile. Um, I think clear cutting in general is regrettable and irreversible, and especially as we get closer to these flood plains, it's a hot, it's, it's reckless. So what I'm asking is maybe it doesn't have to be that way. And I wanted to present a photo from St. Augustine. This is a target center. And what's neat about this is that the retailer saved, whether it was mandated by the, the area or they did it themselves. But St. Augustine is no stranger to being inundated with a lot of rain as they are right now. And so they retained about a twenty-five foot buffer along the street. These trees are higher than the actual building. And in the parking lot, they, uh, this was the drive up to it. So it's a commercial area. There were other stores across the streets, got billboards, but what I liked most was inside the parking lot area, there were actual shade trees that kept the parking lot cool and gave a character. And the footprint of the complex felt like it showed pride and respect for ha- being blessed with natural resources. So what I'd like is for all of you on the planning commission who are doing a wonderful job and continue to use that power that by extension we've given you through our commissioners appointing you to consider passing robust environmental conservation ordinances that ask developers to retain and conserve some of the existing landscape. When the opportunity to save the profile of the trees is there, that would make a world of difference.
PRD was the first step in that, to be correct?
The PRD, but also the, uh, major site grading for, for residential, um, is very different in residential and commercial.
Right.
You, you've already mentioned that.
Right.
Um, I mean, commercial, you're still, I mean, um, Frank Mullins is going to come up here in a minute. Mullins Colony has a thirty-foot landscape strip in front of it. Um, they go and clear it, it was already cleared. But I mean, you're over time going to have something similar to this. I'm not saying the same, but it's going to be similar. Um, and whenever we have the opportunity to, to preserve a tree, we will do as much as we can on our side to make it happen. Um, a lot of the commercial developers will listen to that. If they, if they can make it work, they like, they usually want to make it work. Sometimes this is not, this is not feasible. Um, so I mean, I think that we already do have a pretty strong ordinance. Now, I'm not sure what we could add to it. Um, you know, if you go the, the, the direction of the residential side where it says there's a certain acreage requirement, everything that's resident, that's, uh, commercial outside of a Mullins Colony would fall under that.
Right.
So I mean, that's where it's, sure, there's something, could you do something? You could, but against one of those, I'm not sure how feasible it would be, uh, to do that. You know, again, we can certainly explore it, but.
Okay.
My opinion on it.
I just didn't get the impression that there was, uh, a code on our books that applied to commercial development.
Yes. You, you, again, you can ask, uh, Frank is on it as well, anybody.
On the front end of development?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I know they have to go in in landscape.
Ms. Marlena, I'm going to ask you to wrap it up rather than have a discussion. We've been at this two hours and twenty minutes, so.
I, and I, I do appreciate that too. Well, I'll, I'll take it to this. I'll take it to the fact that I went through that area. Great. Can I get a show of hands? I'll have any of you walk through those five and a half acres? Okay. So, that being said, there, I, I love going for walks. I walk around my own property. We have four acres. Um, a- and there's something about trees. Trees are sort of like, trees to, the community are like sleep to our routine. It's wonderful. You know something's missing when you don't have as many as you're used to. And they function in the background, maintaining our health and our wellness. And so when I walked through here and I saw these trees, I was fascinated to see some that I had never seen before. They're huge, they're massive, and I just think if they have to go, then at least let's celebrate, at least let's know what we have. Uh, I thought this one was fascinating. This is a sugar berry. Have you seen one of these before? It has these protuberances and the animals love the berries and it hosts a dozen moths and butterflies. So I'm trying to figure out how can we retrofit our commercial developments with these pollinator gardens afterwards, with these.
Yeah, that's a good question. May I ask you a question?
Sure.
Did you get permission to go onto the land for those pictures?
No, sir, I absolutely did not. But I did have a lovely time. Okay, thank you. So I just think at this point, what I would like to do is make sure that there, a- a- and it's, it sounds like some developers are doing that. I'm going to let Jason speak on what we need for the Greenway path, but I want to make sure that when you're planning these things that I, I, that you still see the trees there, even though it might be a future development. And then you figure out if there are neighbor, neighboring areas like Jessica Creek. Is that right?
Okay, Ms. Marlena, I, I need you to wrap it up, please.
Okay, I appreciate that. I just was going to ask too, if it's ever possible, to give up a few parking spaces so that more buffers can be retained. I appreciate what the county's doing, but with Patriots Park expansion, there was not a, as, an appreciable buffer left along that street. So that part to me is, is, um, is regrettable and we can't go back. Um, the last thing.
This, this, this is going, this is really venturing into public comment as opposed to anything that deals with this particular property.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure that all of those developers who have our future in their hands, that they make sure that they're building with our future in mind and our vision.
Thank you, ma'am.
That's important to me.
And I'm going to ask, uh, your friend Jason to wait until public comment as opposed to talking about the Greenway while we're considering this particular issue.
His is, is, his is pertinent to the narrative, though. I think, I think he'll keep it a lot briefer than I will.
All right. Okay, with that being said, if you're going to wait, uh, is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Yes, sir, Mr. Lawrence.
Just for the record, I mean, looking at Whispering Pines as far as the development goes, we've got over forty-two percent open space. And that, that is definitely not a financial decision. We could have packed more lots into that development. We made a conscious decision to save the trees and there's actually no encroachment on the flood plain or, um, wetlands. The only wetlands impact was crossing the creek. So I think it's, you know, that particular site is, is, is topographically challenged. That's the reason that there can't be any trees that can save on that site. It, it has nothing to do with any other reason. As a matter of fact, most of the pictures she took along the creek, which that area will be preserved. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, thank you, sir. With, uh, with that being said, I'm going to close the public hearing and accept a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve file RZ one nine zero nine zero eight.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries four zero. Uh, as an old pilot, uh, there are two things you fight when you fly. One is the endurance of the airplane, the other is the endurance of your bladder. And I have reached the endurance of one of those two things. So if we could take a two-minute break.
Okay. What, what is this?
My legs forgot how to work.
Final speed. Harlem. Six to nine. First one. Placed.
What on? Where, where are they on this?
I didn't have time, I just did it. They're under Yeltsin solar. If I don't run, they're just taking.
What I got? Jones Creek still.
Yeah.
Record's like ten o'clock.
Oh, is your record ten o'clock? Okay. No, I don't want to say.
I've seen. For a neighborhood on. Neighborhood proposed on.
All right, if we could. I'll take our seats. We'll go ahead and resume at eight twenty-eight. This was a church service. I think we could have gotten an amen on that.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so we're back in session. Uh, Mr. Butler, we've got two variances tonight. Uh, the first is file VA one nine zero nine zero one.
My name is Sheriff. It's a request for, uh, several variances. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Request for several variances at 4031 Washington Road. We have variances in Section 998 lists a lot of structure requirements, although as noted, setbacks. 9814 landscaping, 98132 non-conforming uses of land and structures, and also 69147 use provisions. Probably is currently zoned C2 general commercial. This location of the property on the west side of Washington Road, just across from this intersection with Flowing Wells Road. It currently is zoned C2. Most of this surrounding property is also zoned C2 until you get across the CSX right-of-way. You have a mixture of R3 and S1. Their area view of the property, again, it's currently a car dealership, a very odd-shaped property, part of the reason for the request for the variance. Of existing site, what we will be talking about mostly tonight is this carport you can see right here. We'll keep going through the rest of the presentation. Shows the plat of the property. There is a large section here, the parking, that is on CSX right-of-way. They do have an agreement with CSX. Also, the actual building itself is on CSX as well. Again, they have an agreement with the property. There's a close-up of the plat itself. Again, the carport is generally in this area here. Now, location, sketch location of the property, showing the existing carport. Existing landscaping on the site, also the carport that we've been talking about a little bit. So the carport itself, I was put there a few months ago without a building permit. Sparked, unfortunately, got to pay a visit to them. That is a code violation. They did have requests to include, or to be able to keep, but had a request of variance. One of the problems with this site, it does not meet a lot of things with our code. The first being the setbacks. There's pretty much no way for it to meet setbacks with the center line, with the front setback being 100 feet from the center line. Existing building is well within that. Most of the property is within that setback. You also have the fact that with the use provisions, it does not meet the one and a half acre requirement for a car lot. So it is very non-conforming in that respect. We do have, one of the requests is to have a variance for that, that one requirement. There's also some with landscaping. Again, one of the things with that, it already has added landscaping to it, so there's really not a reason to increase that. Overall, staff does see this property as being a long-term turn for the county, again, with it being very small, but it has had a business there for a long time. So due to that reason, I would want, send us a recommended approval with several conditions. One of the things is from building standards. The carport must be permitted and inspected to their current code out of Columbia County. Also, with planning, you have no more additional structures maybe added to this property. We are giving them a variance for their non-conforming status, but again, this is a, there can be nothing else done to the property at this point. Doesn't mean hardly anything. But again, because it has been an existing business, it is reasonable to allow them to expand in a minor way, continue to operate. Our last thing is propose fence in front of the carport will be allowed with any necessary permits. That's something that the applicant has requested as well, to kind of block off the carport itself. That includes staff recommendation.
So I want to make sure that one thing's clear to both the commissioners and the people in attendance here. The recommendation to approve with conditions, the carports stays, because we're only dealing with the carport, no other structure in the property.
The carport, sure, is all the non-conformities. So the carport is really the only thing that if you approved it, in the car...
But they have to abide by the conditions.
Yes.
If we vote to deny, the carport comes down.
Or it goes away. Everything else, kind of, all the other variances kind of disappear because of no expansion of the actual site.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Okay, is the applicant here this evening? Yes, sir, would you like to come forward and give us any additional information? Please give us your name and home address.
Yes, I'm Randall Minos, 460 Boulder 4, Martinez, Georgia, 30907. Well, first of all, when we got this carport, we hired a company for that. They never say that we need a permit, actually. And we have it, I have the receipt with me.
Alabama or whatever that...
We hired this company, I mean, and they say, they work on Columbia County all the time, Eagle Carports. So we had the receipt, they came and installed it, but they never say anything about, we need a permit to build it, I mean, carport. And then, so yeah, we got a lease agreement with the railroad track to use the land on the back. Remot, that's it.
Gentlemen, any questions? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Chair, and I would move to approve with conditions, item H2G9, VA 190901.
Do I hear a second?
Thank you.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Motion to approve carries 4-0. Last item in the public hearing tonight, file VA 190902. Ms. Boltie.
Yes, sir, this is a request for a variance to Section 90-135, which is our sign code at 675 Mullins Colony Drive, currently zoned C2 general commercial. This property is located on the east side of Washington Road. It is, of course, the Mullins Colony of commercial development. Ariel hasn't quite caught up with the development. It is currently zoned C2, as are the immediately adjacent properties. Across the railroad track at the rear, you do have some residential, you have Brandon Wild Pud across the street. Ariel, from when the site was under construction, it obviously does not look like that if you've been by it at all recently. So this is a photo of the existing site. The proposal, proposed building location that we're dealing with tonight is to the left of Belk, the Anchor Store. So you can see, it's quite a distance off the road. It is, this is me kind of standing in the island on Washington Road to take this picture, so there is some visibility of that location from the roadway. Their existing freestanding sign is here. The building we're talking about tonight, the tenant will have access to that panel on the freestanding sign. The store location here, it is a proposed earth fair. It's about 21,000 square foot building. Their ordinary sign allowance under our code, as far as wall signage goes, would be 125 square foot principal sign on the wall, and then up to an additional about 30 square feet of miscellaneous signage that they could break up and use however they wanted. Their request is for a total of 470 square feet. The main sign, the principal sign, is 300 square feet. Again, 125 is what would be allowed under the code. The justification for this is that they are quite a ways off the road. They're about 750 feet back into the property. So obviously, they feel they need a little bit larger sign, a little larger letters, so people can read it from that distance. It's a valid argument in staff's opinion. The height of this sign is very similar to the height of Belk's sign. They're both right at seven feet letter height, so it shouldn't look out of scale from that distance to allow that larger principal sign. The remaining signs fall under the miscellaneous, so there's four of them. Tomato, tagline, the philosophy sign, and then they're hard to see, but there are small signs on the canopy also. Don't show up really well on the elevation, but those are the four miscellaneous additional signs. We don't limit the number of miscellaneous signs, we just limit the total square footage. In this case, that's about the 30 square feet. That would allow for either the tomato, which is 20, or the canopy signs on their own, which are also 20. We don't see an issue with allowing both of those. Brings it to 40 square feet. It's a small increase in the miscellaneous signage, but not a real concern. The additional signs, at the staff level, we don't have justification to support the variance for the additional two signs, the tagline and the food philosophy. The main concern for this tenant is visibility from the road and getting people to the store. The principal wall sign should take care of a lot of that, as well as the freestanding sign out on the road. This sign in particular, sitting low down on the wall like it does, is not going to be visible from Washington Road. It's not intended to be readable at that distance. That can also be handled with window signage. They are also allowed window signs on this building, up to 50% of the window area. They are proposing a good bit of glass on the building, so they do have the option and flexibility to use some of that space as well. We did find a similar example that was made in Florida for a similar store. Included most of the same signs, not quite all of them, but square, total square footage was similar. This is in progress down there, just for information. We are recommending approval with conditions, so it would be approval of the larger wall sign, the 300-square-foot principal building sign, and the increase in the miscellaneous signage to the 40 square feet to cover whichever portion of that signage they would like to. That allows the tomato and the canopy signage that I mentioned earlier, but they could use it for other purposes if they chose to. That concludes the recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff?
Philosophy sign is a wall sign?
Currently, as shown, it's a wall sign, but it could be potentially a window sign.
Any other questions? Thank you. Mr. Mullins? Give us your name and home address.
Frank Mullins, 305 Lancaster Street in Aiken, South Carolina, 298. Thank you for having me on a very long night. Last but not least, but this is, as you said, this is a request for earth fair, just to be visible in the back of the shopping center. What they want to do is a farmer's market type of store with prepared foods and fresh vegetables. It does have a lot of glass, so it'll be very open and hopefully, you know, very fresh is image they want to portray, but they need it identifiable from the road, and you can see from signs or from the pictures that it's in the corner, and it's a little tough to see. That's the reason for the...
Gentlemen, any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the variance for file VA 190902. That conditions?
Second. Okay, second still hold? Any discussion? All in favor? Approve carries 4-0. Okay, we have no text amendments tonight. We have no legal matters. Do we have any staff or commissioner comments? Okay, Mr. Evans, I appreciate the service you've given us. For those that don't know, Mr. Evans has been appointed to be the deputy juvenile judge to assist Doug Flanagan in his endeavors in that office. And being such, he has decided that he's going to resign his position on planning and zoning, and effective after tonight's meeting. And Mr. Russell Wilder, here in the back, will be taking his position, or a position on the board. I'll be sliding over to District 1 from countywide, and Mr. Wilder will be appointed as the countywide representative for Mr. Doug Duncan. So with that being said, we've been friends a long time, and I appreciate the time and the effort and the wisdom that you've shown in the short time you've been on the board, and look forward to working with you in, on other projects and toward other endeavors in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would say the same for staff. They've done a wonderful job through this. I've been very impressed. And also my colleagues. I hate not here tonight. I enjoy... Thanks to everybody.
Told him tonight that he becomes the official chaplain, and I know, you know how much he loves that.
I could not recommend a better person.
Gentlemen, any other comments? Okay, that being said, public comments. Yes, sir, I think you have one.
I'm on a good time. Thank you very much. Stay this late or keep you longer, but I do think it's important.
Name and home address, please.
Regarding the Yeltsin Road...
Name and home address, please, sir.
I'm sorry, my name is Robert Neal. I live at 6350 Happy Valley Lane, Apling, Georgia, 30802. My comments are regarding, first of all, let me say that I have great respect for Columbia County, the government. The people are fantastic. I built a home here a year ago. I was a contractor, do-it-yourself. Everybody in the county was extremely helpful, and I respect what they're trying to do. I asked them what the rules were. I followed them willingly and religiously. It was built without incident. The inspectors were thorough. I have nothing but praise for them. I respect what you're trying to do. I'm here to assist, if I can, by eyes. The 30-foot natural vegetative barrier at that site was always part of the plan. From day one, when they started talking to Will and to the planning commission, to the county commission and everything else, that was always a thing. Undisturbed vegetative barrier. I'm here to tell you, and I'm sorry, I can't get the pictures to work, I'm sorry, but I will send them to you, but, or Will will have them for you. But the pictures clearly demonstrate that they have...
Pictures still online?
I haven't. I will do that tonight.
But have you posted, are these similar to the ones you've posted online previously?
No, no, they're not. Those were of the property, and just to show the fact that it's been timbered. It was timbered...
Is this one small area? Does this represent basically the entire...
Well, I'm not sure what picture you're looking at there, but...
Looking at a picture that looks...
No, that's just, that's just, I took about 25 shots. And I walked the perimeter of the vegetative barrier, looking for destruction of the barrier, and it has been significantly damaged and destroyed. Now, there's a lot there. I'm not saying that there's nothing there. But undisturbed means undisturbed. It doesn't mean we're going to go in there and thin out the pine trees that we want that are this big around. It means undisturbed. They went in there and harvested the pine trees because they wanted the pine trees, and they, they're worth something. But it says, from the very first start, undisturbed vegetative barrier. And you can take, I'll send you some pictures, and you can see, you can see right through, some places, they've, you can see right through it. You can see right through what was a thick forested area, and now you can see through it. So what they've done is, starting off the project, they've violated and disrespected the county by violating what they said they would do. And that is keep a 30-foot, and I'm so sorry that I can't show you the pictures tonight, but I will post them online, if that's okay. Can you see them there? Okay. I will post every one of them on there, and you'll see that at certain points. Will, you've seen some of the pictures. I mean, am I, have some, have trees been cut down right in the middle of the 30-foot barrier? Large pine trees? I showed you pictures of them today.
It would appear that way. And again, that's why I think it would be prudent for our staff to have a look at it and see.
Well, I think, I think you're right. And I'm going to, I'll just end it with this. My recommendation, since there is picture evidence that has been done in violation of the intent and the very, very start of a 30-foot barrier to hide the thing, so you don't have people driving by there and living by there, seeing solar panels instead of trees. And I didn't object to the solar panel, to the solar farm. I do object to them following the rules that should be done to preserve the soil and to preserve the barrier that they committed to. My recommendation to you would be to require, with the landscaping, require them to show what has been disturbed, and how much of the existing 30-foot barrier that was there when they started still remains, and how many, which one of the pine trees, to mark the pine trees that they cut down in that vegetative barrier. And it's 20 to 50. And I'm talking about big pine trees, that even though they're not low, they still add to the beauty of, and the screening of the site. So that's all I had to say tonight. Thank you for doing it. Thank you for your service, sir, and for, I know you had some questions about the project, and I thank you for tabling it.
And I'd like to thank you, because the discussion that you all had on your online board actually precipitated the action we were able to push the EPD towards.
Well, the other thing, too, that...
May not have happened without you all giving us feedback.
Thank you. But Will is also, I mean, I can't, I can't speak highly enough of Will. Will has been very helpful, and I think he's trying to do the dead-level best, as is everybody in the county, to do what's right. They just can't be in a thousand places at the same time to see what's going on like that. And that's the service I wanted to provide to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
We don't have much public left?
No, no.
Yes, sir?
I'm glad, I'm glad, because I get nervous in crowds, so I'm glad that they had already gone.
My name is Ryan Sanders. My address is 154 Crog Street, Atlanta, Georgia. I represent the project. I think there's a huge amount of confusion, so I'm really thrilled to have the opportunity to address the...
What project?
Yeltsin Road project.
That project?
The project that we were just discussing a moment ago, the one on Yeltsin Road. So first, there was a number of things that were said at the beginning that tends to step back and address. He indicated that they have disturbed the, and I think he assumed that was the project has disturbed the site. This project has not taken one foot onto the site. The landowner pulled a timber clearing permit, has cleared the timber. We have in locks up with the county, the EPD, and landscape architect, gone through the plant, the planning commission, CUP, county commission approval, then we had a plan intake where we met with all of the county officials to ensure that we were following the approved plan.
So that brings up a question. When, if they adhere to the site as it's presented to them, is the property owner able to timber a project however they want to into the buffer because it's theirs? Then, or do they have to maintain the buffer?
Then, or do they have to maintain the buffer that we pass?
So when, when Jonathan met on site with them, they marked where the buffer was going. They started the buffer, so when they went in there and timbered it, they knew, okay, do not go beyond this. As far as I know, again, Jonathan, not here today, I talked to him on the phone, he's a little sick. He said that he hasn't been back out to the site since that timber operation took place.
The answer is yes, the, the, the buffer applies from the minute it passes, they're not supposed to, to, to impact that buffer.
Absolutely. But we get, we have county-approved permission to remove trees that are over 50 feet tall. That was given to us by the county at plan intake, and we have a heat map done to identify all the trees over 50 feet, and we brought that to the plan intake. That was an approved recommendation by the county to allow the, the, the landowner, who was a timber farmer, who wants to engage in a solar lease with our company, to remove his trees in advance of our project taking, pulling the building permit and initiating construction. That said, we were, according to our CUP, we had to have a 50-foot, or excuse me, a 60-foot undisturbed buffer, and then an additional 15-foot vegetative buffer that would be in place behind the natural buffer. And the idea there was, in any, in any areas where the natural buffer did not completely shield the site of the solar farm, we would put the vegetative buffer in there to reinforce it. So you're having basically a double whammy. During the plan, the CUP intake or CUP approval process, the landowner indicated that he's a timber farmer, he wants to remove his, his, his harvests trees in accordance with his business plan. So there was a little bit of tension between the natural buffer and timber harvesting that was planned by the landowner. And of course, the landowner is a reputable business owner, operator in the county who is very, very concerned with not taking one step without county approval. So we were all present at the plan intake, and we came forward to the county and said that the landowner concerned about his timber, the project is concerned about shading, we would request the, the permission to clear the trees over 50 feet. That would allow us two things. A, that would allow us to have clearance from the solar farms, we wouldn't create shading. It also allowed the landowner to receive his trees, or to harvest his trees. The landscape architect chimed in and said, it's actually going to increase the effectiveness of a natural buffer, because when these tall trees that are upwards, upwards 125 feet, the foliage is up top. The, the trunk itself is relatively small and doesn't act as a great shield. When those tall trees come down, the, the foliage is removed, the sun can hit the ground, and you're going to get an explosion of vegetative growth. So the, and so it was a pragmatic solution that was, that was actually brought forward by the county and all parties signed off on it, so we've been executing the plan that was approved upon plan intake, and we've had the landscape architect out twice, had the survey out four or five times. Been in constant communication with the county, and we've been religious about following every letter of the, of the law. There was some concern because I believe that the, the neighbors drove by and saw that the timber was being removed and felt like the construction project had been started. So we got a call from Joseph Farrell from the EPD, Georgia EPD office, and asked the same questions that are being asked here. What's going on? Has the project been started? Have you filed your NOI? And we were 100% transparent with Joseph. Open book, he went, went through step by step and confirmed that we were following the correct procedure both at the county level and at the project level. I, the county had instructed us to do the right thing, and we were following the procedure correctly. So all this being said, I think there's a little bit of a disconnect between what's going on at the, at the property now and construction activities that will occur when the project has, has gone in construction. The, as you mentioned earlier, the intent here is not to be a public hearing on this conditional use permit, it's to confirm that we're following all the prescribed rules, you know, as, as described by the county at plan intake. And staff has been out there, and approval is to, their recommendation is to approve. Landscape architect, who's been in contact with, with our development team, has been out to the site, I spoke to him. And we're going to have another meeting at the end of this, at the end of the construction process, and the, the original meeting was to, well, the third, the second meeting was to come out to the site once the fence is up, and we're going to walk the perimeter, and he's going to tell us where the vegetative buffer needs to be installed on the interior of the natural buffer in the areas that have line of sight where it might need additional screening. Then we're going to come back at the end, at the end of the project, after the natural buffer has had four months to grow, because the canopy has been removed, and we're going to confirm that the prescribed vegetative buffer is in the right area and doesn't need to be expanded or anything like that. It'll be a triple check. So I guess I come before you today saying Columbia County is an especially difficult geography to work in. We're in 71 different counties right now, and you have a very challenging environment because it's transitioning from, excuse me, from rural to a more developed community. And it's very difficult to, to govern these areas, and candidly, we think you guys are doing a great, a great job at it. Will, John Williams, the landscape architect, all the guys answered the phone. So we, we definitely appreciate this is a difficult geography to work in, and we're doing our best to be good neighbors.
So it, it's your claim that, that the way it looks now is just part of the process?
Absolutely.
And, and then it could be alarming to someone who's not involved in the day-to-day because it looks thinner than what was agreed to in the beginning, but the end result will be as, as it was agreed?
And, and from our perspective, we agree with everything you've said, but I would, I would note that we feel like we are following the plan, the letter of the law, and have not misstepped in any, any regard. We feel like we're doing exactly what you told us to do from the beginning, but we agree that this is a 40-year thing, and this is a 40-year project. We have a 35-year contract with the utility. We have a 40-year contract with the landowner. When we came into this, we, we know both, the vegetative buffer is going, is going to grow, so we're planting three-gallon trees, within 18 months, we're going to have the proper height. Natural buffer is, is much the same. The tall, vetchable timber was removed. That's going to allow for more undergrowth to, to occur, and as you drive down the road, it's similar to the way the DOT maintains the highways. If you, if you clear the tall trees, you're going to get this explosion of soft woods and, and just basically just natural growth, and it's going to be far more dense now that the big tall trees that are, that are shading underbrush. So we agree with the landscape architect in that removing these trees is actually going to increase the, the density of the natural buffer. It also allows the landowner to harvest his trees, which is thin, but we can, we would, everybody knows that a solar farm is going there, so driving by and seeing timbering activities that may not be following same regulations that a solar farm would be required to file could be concerning.
Let me ask this, you, you got a plan, because trees don't grow, and I got a lot of family members that timbers and talk about, we clear out trees all the time. Bigger and bigger, you have plans to clear out the other pines?
No.
Because they'll choke out the vegetation if they get enough. That's what you do, is you grow it and.
So we, we have been required by the county, we're not allowed to clear anything less than 50 feet. We've opted internally to raise that to 60 feet, because we don't want it to be guessing it, we want to make sure that there's no, there's no.
That's what I'm saying, when these other pines that are below, they're going to grow taller, and they're going to end up being a canopy.
Well, so, so right now.
What is the maintenance plan?
Right now, it's mostly gum trees, and we're hoping there's not going to be a ton of volunteer pines that come in behind the full growth. There could be, and if there is.
Here in Georgia.
That's right, and we, we have a 35-year contract, so if it gets over 60 feet, we, our plan is to come in and remove it. And we have the, the ability to maintain the, the natural buffer at opting to 60 feet.
Thank you, sir.
And, and that's a, that's an issue we'll have to take up with the property owner, because he's the one that timbered it, not the solar company. So, yeah, sure.
All right, gentlemen, gentlemen, with, with that, we're going, we're going, we're going, we're going to get running down rabbit holes here. I'm going to go ahead and call for a motion to adjourn.
Chairman, I move to adjourn.
Go here, second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to adjourn carries four zero. Meeting ends at nine o'clock. Next meeting is September 19th, in these chambers at 6:00 PM.